Welcome to the committee of the whole reading. The head of city council today, the number three is meeting now, Johnson Gordon. Please stand for the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Council members, Costin.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Stanky.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens' input time. Citizens' input is a maximum of 60 minutes. It's set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We will be using the podium in the center of the room.
I hear you, Scotty. Good. I think you said citizens' input.
Yes, sir. Citizens' input, right where you're at.
Okay. This is my first time here in the morning, and it's my first time since the newly elected council members.
State your name. Your name?
I will. My name is Bruce Marvin. I reside in District Three. I've been a resident of Cape Coral for some 19 years. I've stood before this council before. Matters concerning city government. Affordable housing has been addressed by this body. I often review the recently sold homes in the news press. In last Sunday's paper, I noticed a home in District Three about eight blocks north of my home selling for $2,230,227. That sort of got my interest. The home is 1,463 square feet, a nice home, not on a canal, with no other improvements such as a pool or fence, no extensive remodeling, just a nice home. The home is on the Lee County tax rolls for $216,887. While selling one's home for 10 times the assessed value is great for the seller and the broker, the realtor that brokered it, I'm not sure this is good for affordable housing. In researching further, I found 17 homes bought by a single LLC, which the home I'm mentioning was bought by an LLC, in Lee County. While I did not research all of them, I did find four in Cape Coral, all without landish sale prices. I looked at six homes, all ranging from 1,381 square feet to 1,574 square feet, none on canals, none on lakes, none with pools, ranging in price just over $1 million to over $3 million. My home, 1,600 square, 60 square feet, pool fenced, just offered me the average of the sale price of $1,507 per square foot, and see how quick I'm out of here. One might question if perhaps money laundering is an issue rated to the LLC. Somebody's got to look into this before things get out of hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to four B discussions.
I did, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. You must.
Sir, could I get an address? Could you see me after with an address?
Yes.
Or you could give it to me right now if you could.
I tell you what, I will email my research to the council members, and I will give you the address of the home that, yes, in District Three, it sold for 1,424 Southeast 21st Street. Sold for $2,230,227. Had assessed value of just under $217,000.
And that home was purchased by the same LLC that you said you purchased these other homes?
Yes, sir, same LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm advised by staff that that LLC purchased numerous homes recently. The transaction price was $2 million. It included multiple properties, not just that one home for over $2 million.
Okay. Any other council discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to four B discussions. B1, presentation from the collaboratory brought forward by Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Sarah Owen, who's President and CEO of the collaboratory, and she's going to talk to us today about a project that I'm excited about, where government, community, and business can best work together to help solve social problems in our community. Sarah?
Thank you, Councilman Hayden, and thank you to you all. It's really great to be here this morning. I want to begin by just thanking each of you, our community, and it's been through a really difficult time. And I know as elected officials, it's sharpened your mission and what you were elected to do. So, thank you so much. And I hope my comments about collaboratory really kind of will play into that and find a way that we can all work more closely together. So, what is collaboratory? You may have heard of it. You know, I appreciate being here and having the opportunity to talk to you about it. One of our founders, John Shepherd, who passed away last year, had a great quote that said, "One little idea can change the world. One little voice can begin a great cause." And I like to start with that because collaboratory has one little idea, or maybe you would consider it one really big idea. Our organization has been on a journey. We've been around for 46 years. We were the Southwest Florida Community Foundation, and many of you might know us by that name or have worked with us on scholarship. We oversee the mayor's scholarship for the city of Cape Coral. We've done various projects. But in 2018, we really became aware that connectivity was key to creating change in community and for people to work together. And we renovated a space over in Fort Myers. It was the 1920s Atlantic Coast Depot, and we named that physical space Collaboratory. We thought about it as a lab for collaboration, and what could happen when you created a space where people worked together, they gathered together, it was a place for nonprofits to have fundraisers, whatever it may be. But we discovered that just building a space and bringing people together was not enough. It wasn't intentional enough. So, I want you to take note of this date, February 2020, the month before COVID. Our board approved a multimillion-dollar budget to launch a daring initiative based on ideas and budgets they had been looking at before, and we named it "The Greatest Problem-Solving Initiative in American History." Well, you can imagine when you come out publicly and say something like that, people could kind of say, "Who in the world do you think you are?" I mean, that is such a big idea. You know, how could you ever make a claim of something like that? Well, we knew because it was such a big idea and because it would take people by surprise, we said, "You know, we need to vote on a new unified identity for operations." And because people have been so familiar with the physical space that had opened, Collaboratory, we said, "You know, this work really is about collaboration. It is about creating the physical and virtual space for people to work together." But it's more than a name. You know, I would not waste your time. I wouldn't come here today to tell you about a new brand that we launched a couple of years ago. People rebrand things all the time. The new name and the notion of Collaboratory are big deals. They were big deals for us then. They are even bigger deals for us now, but they're not the big idea. As John Shepherd said, sometimes it's a little idea, but we say it's the big idea. Here's the big idea. Collaboratory is committed to coordinating, bringing Southwest Florida together to solve all our major social issues on an 18-year deadline. You read that correctly, all of them, in 18 years, every single one. We believe that two things are necessary for great achievement: a plan and not quite enough time. Oftentimes, you'll hear organizations that are trying to make community change talk to you about, "We hope to end hunger. We hope to find a solution for affordable housing. We hope that we find things for literacy." And that is all genuine, and it's all very important. But, you know, Leonard Bernstein, in his quote, showed us that we have to attach deadlines to things if we really want to hold ourselves accountable. Now, you may think, "The greatest problem-solving initiative in American history," you may think, "solve all the problems in 18 years." Please know that we cannot do this alone. If we could, we're a 46-year-old organization. We should have done it by now, right? Millions of dollars have been distributed through our organization to solve problems, hundreds and thousands of volunteers, supporting hundreds and thousands of nonprofits, but it hasn't worked yet. So, how are we going to do this? What is going to be different now? Well, we're using a highly inclusive approach to connect and coordinate innovators and problem-solvers. They're already out there. Solutions already exist. And the reason we've got to do this is these problems are big, stubborn, and difficult. Why would a 46-year-old organization who is rolling along very well, doing fine, distributing millions of dollars, come out and make such a bold proclamation? Well, it's because the things that we all care about are not heading in the right direction. Everything we see going up that we want to go down, everything's going down that we want to see going up. Let me give you some specific examples. These are all pre-COVID and pre-EAN numbers. I want you to keep that in mind. Look at some of the things that people come and see you about all the time that you might be involved in. Let's look at these numbers and compare national, state, and just Lee County. We are a regional organization, but for today, I wanted to show you Lee County numbers. Things like depression, kids living 200% below the poverty level, low food access, moms without prenatal care, suicide. Organization is deeply committed to data, and as we were exploring data year after year and seeing these numbers heading in the wrong direction, we had to examine our own mission, our own purpose, and say, "Are we doing enough? Is this just going to be business as usual?" Now, post-storm, we think this is more important than ever. None of us are happy with these numbers. And if we talk to our partners in the other counties, who you all work closely with, I know as well, we're, they're all experiencing the same realities. If I added their numbers in, those numbers would be So, why isn't this changing? Well, we think they're problems to our approach with solving problems. So, usually after I show data like that, everybody's like, "Okay, what are we going to do? We better jump in on food. We better jump in on poverty, racism, illiteracy." And we all go to that singular problem, right? We gather around it. But the reality is, you can't solve problems one at a time, and that's what we always try to do. All of these problems are connected to each other. Let's take a look at economic opportunity. A number of years ago, our foundation said, "Hey, if we could just tackle economic opportunity, things would be much better." But what we found quickly is it was really connected to the strength of the public schools. But the strength of the public schools is connected to early childhood learning. That's connected to maternal health, and you just saw those maternal health numbers for Lee County. Those were some of the worst of the worst. Moms can't get to their OB-GYN appointments because we haven't tackled transportation. So, if we look at just one of these and break it down a little bit more, you can't solve anything with public school strength unless you're looking at funding. Funding requires a change in state mandates, which means you have to address voter apathy, which means you've got to do some grassroots organizing to the people who many of them are working three and four jobs, and you're right back to economic opportunity. So, if you just pick one of these out and try to solve it, and you don't look at all of them, nothing is going to change. There are not 100 different problems. There's one large entanglement with 100 entangled symptoms. It's all connected. And when Councilman Hayden and I began speaking about this originally, it's like, not only are the problems connected, but all of us that are trying to solve them are connected as well. We can go through lots of different narratives. We work with people who are really committed to domestic violence, but until we show them that one of the main data points of why women aren't seeking out domestic violence help is because there's nowhere for them to leave their dogs. They won't leave their dogs to go to the shelter. So, all different kinds of things that we may not readily think about are connected. Dogs are connected to domestic violence. Buses are connected to babies because of transportation. Voting is connected to everything, as you know, early childhood education. Education is connected to nutrition. Nutrition is connected to policing. We hear a lot about policing, but you know that grocery stores will not go into high-crime areas because they're worried. So, we just keep creating the same problem over and over again. We've seen this significantly during COVID and then the storm. You know, if there's no broadband access, people can't get services, but broadband goes into the lower-income neighborhoods last. And here's one that hits close to home. We are so committed to tourism dollars, and now we're facing issues post-EAN about those dollars. We can inadvertently cause problems, not through malice, but we just don't realize when we solve for one thing, we can create a whole nother problem with low-paying jobs. And we're not organized with each other. That's to put it mildly. Any government, any institution, any nonprofit, we have a hierarchy, not for control, but just for communication. But let's look at our communities, and this is really getting to the heart of what I want to show you. Is there a lot of great people doing a lot of great work in our communities? We've got three or four health systems, numerous community foundations, three United Ways, dozens of large nonprofits, hundreds and thou, hundreds or thousands of smaller nonprofits, churches doing great work, city governments, county governments, state governments, federal governments. The way our community is made up, we've got activists and individual volunteers that come from all over the country to make this home, wanting to do things, more Chamber of Commerce's than we can count, some big companies, thousands and thousands of small businesses, four or five different school districts, universities and colleges, and we're all part of some kind of collective efforts around economic development or collaborations, right? All of these things are going on, but the problem is, there's nothing or no one coordinating all of this. Now, I don't mean controlling it. I mean, how do we begin linking the work you do with the work that's happening in business in a significant way? How do we begin linking all of these things together? The way that people like NASA, Airbnb, and Uber have done, we just don't think about that in community. We accept it in the private sector or on a massive effort like NASA getting somebody to the moon and back in a decade. That seemed just as impossible as what I'm saying to you now. When JFK made a proclamation to get a man to the moon and back in a decade, that was impossible. But NASA played a coordinating role. They made sure all the different elements, they built nothing, just like Collaboratory would build, will build nothing. We connect all of the work that's going on in a significant way, and we do it every day, all day long. Imagine for a minute if there had been no NASA. We would have never gotten a person to the moon and back safely. It couldn't have happened. So, we need to apply that same kind of thinking, create a collective goal we can all work on together while we're all doing our own thing, some sort of regional goal that we can all get behind. We've got to make these ideas turnover-proof so that when leaders who start them leave, the whole thing doesn't fall apart. These are the 10 years for the average law enforcement, education, medical, and nonprofit leaders. Once one of those leaders starts something, gets everybody behind him and leaves, you've seen it happen a million times, it completely falls apart. We've got to change that. And then time and money. NASA had the federal government, right? They had a system for the money to come in. But in our communities, we don't plan for this. We don't budget for it. We're so addicted to 99 cents of every dollar going to program, we don't think about what it's going to take to coordinate anything. Nobody has any time or any hope or thought of time to make time for coordinating. And finally, we don't plan for ego's competition and backbiting. It drags us down every time. We go to a meeting, somebody's got a big idea, and we get to the parking lot, and we just talk terrible about it. It just crashes and burns us every time. Because ego, competition, and distrust that exist in collaboration are really just technical challenges that we can't overcome. But we're not alone, right? This is in every community in America, every city, every county, and every region. But Collaboratory is very committed to playing that coordinating role. We made a very big, bold commitment with finances. We made a very big, bold commitment with the way we do our work. We changed our identity. And what you're seeing here is just a very shortened version of an explanation session that we do several times a week, either on Zoom or in person. We'll go anywhere and everywhere, and we'll do it for the next 18 years because we think it's important that everybody hears the same message and has the opportunity to get involved. So, I'm really here today to just kind of introduce this to you, let you get comfortable with the concept, and then we'll be reaching out to say, "Hey, what's the best way that the city of Cape Coral can get involved in this?" And I think now, with the focus on the recovery efforts that we've got to do as a county and as a region, that this type of coordination is going to be more important than ever. So, this really is just an invitation to join us because we know we cannot do it alone, and your involvement is critically important to us. So, thank you again for giving me this time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll open up to council for any discussions, unless Councilmember Hayden wants to follow up first with that.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. When Sarah first approached me on this, you know, obviously it turns your head a bit when you hear solving everything in 18 years, but, you know, you got to start somewhere. And I think, you know, we spent a lot of time discussing new ordinances, a budget, land use changes, zoning changes, but all of what she just talked about is all interconnected to where we're at, and finding ways to make a difference is important, especially when it comes, I mean, it, you know, it's, that's a devastating statistic when you hear that, you know, a majority of our kids are living 200% below the poverty line, and how do we make a difference? Well, it starts with one key thing. It starts with what the main reason the collaboratory exists, is bringing people together and starting communication and laying out some sort of a blueprint or a plan that even at our level that we might be able to follow in working with nonprofits or other organizations. You know, we've talked about how, you know, one of the, one of the groups that we want to bring into our city is medical complexes, and that includes behavioral health and things that we can do. So, you know, this kind of starts the initial discussions about, you know, what we can do as a government body to help make some significant changes in that 18-year plan as we move forward. You know, it's not going to happen all at once. There are going to be frustrations. There are going to be things that maybe don't move as quick as we want them to. But starting those discussions, and it's, you know, she's making the rounds. She's talked to the Estero City Councils. Now, she's talking to us. She's going to talk to all the other government bodies to start to plant that seed now so that we can reach out and continue discussions and get together with them. And, you know, and Collaboratory may be the landing place where these groups meet and get together because that's what it's set up for, is to bring people together to help solve some of our most significant problems that exist in our community. You heard the gentleman talk about affordable housing. Well, that factors into all this as well. So, pretty much every conversation we have up here, as we discuss process, feeds into what she's discussed today. So, my plan is to continue to meet with Sarah. My plan is to continue to reach out with other government bodies as she talks to them to keep this, keep this going. And I will offer quarterly reports to you as the year goes on so that we can stay up to date. But, you know, remember, this is an important issue for all of us as we build our community and face the challenges that are ahead of us, not only past EAN, but, you know, what we deal with within the future. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to item B2, Quarterly Grants Management Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're getting back on track with regard to staff providing you the routine quarterly reports on a variety of business-related issues. And so, we're going to start off with your Financial Services Director, Mr. Mark Mason, quickly walking you through where we are with the submittal and acceptance of grants throughout the organization. Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir. I'm Mr. City Manager, Mark Mason, Financial Service Director. I have two presentations this morning, one for the fourth quarter because that's, I think that's where we were looking to discuss today, and one for the first quarter because, yeah, we're in the first quarter. We're done with that as well. So, I wanted to kind of go through this for the fourth quarter real quick, like. Overall, for the fourth quarter, we had applied for four different grants, two federal and two state grants specifically, and we have a number of pending awards. Again, we have four pending awards, three state grants, and one county grant. Number of grants that were awarded during the fourth quarter were seven, three federal, three state, and one other, other grant. I think it was a small grant. I think we went through Walmart, actually. Some of the ones that we received or have been applied for, police, the Edward Bernie Grants, the Florida DEP Firdapp Grant, we received one for Lake Mead, also the Coastal Partnership Initiative for Four Mile Cove through, and the Fish and Wildlife North American Wetlands Conservation Act Grant. Overall, we have 73 active grants outstanding in the total amount of $77 million. And we have a total available to draw. In other words, these were working on all of these grants of $50 million, $50.4 million. I have a number of slides that indicates each one of the grants that are outstanding per department. Development Services currently has 12 active grants outstanding, majority of which are CDBG and housing grants. FIRE has a number of outstanding grants, again, the majority of which are hazard mitigation or some type of mitigation grant. Police has 13 active grants, and this was as of September 30th, again, outstanding. Parks has a number of different grants, most of which are TDC-type grants, as well as the Firdapp Grant, and I also believe we have a wetlands conservation grant for Yellow Fever Park that's outstanding. Public Works, the majority of these are all sidewalk grants through FDOT. And on utilities, the bulk of the grants that are outstanding besides the HMGP grants are the, for the river-crossing grant through the state of Florida. And that's it for that fourth quarter. If there's any questions, while I switch over and go to the next one.
Any questions on the fourth quarter report? Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you for that report. And the number of grants that I see and the number that I know are available, in your opinion, what's your take with the volume of grants that we have to deal with, the value of having, if you will, a full-time grant writer or grant manager?
We do have a full-time grant manager. We have a grant coordinator that's housed in financial services. We have a grant coordinator that's housed in financial services. She basically coordinates grants through, across all the departments, works with the city manager, specifically the gentleman sitting in this chair, as well as the assistant city manager on managing grants. Each one of the departments has somebody, and in some cases, like when police and fire, specifically named grant managers or grant writers. So we have a number of people, plus we also have seven contracts that we have available to us in support of writing grants and very specific or specialized grants, not least of which we also, the folks that do our lobbying for us also can help with writing grants as well. So we are well-covered, and this is very little different than most other communities in the state of Florida or throughout the United States for that matter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Mason?
All right. So for the first quarter, which has been probably a little bit more active primarily due to the recovery from Hurricane Ian, we have a total of 11 grants that were applied for. Six were federal, three were state and two were county. Pending awards, federal grant, we have one that's pending right now, and the number of grants that were awarded so far is nine for the year. Some of the ones that were applied for on the first quarter, the majority of which in this particular circumstance were finance-related, and those are the ones that are associated with recovery and FEMA. Police had two fairly, had two grants that were outstanding or applied for. Parks had a couple that were applied for. Public Works, we're looking at the, I believe this is phase three of the Sun Trail Grant Program. And then, of course, with finance, we had the expedited grants that we had applied for through FEMA. So in the first quarter, we now have 92 outstanding or active grants totaling $103.7 million. Total available to draw, $65.5 million. Again, active grants, Development Services continues with 13 outstanding active grants, the majority of which are housing and CDBG grants. Fire, we have 11 active grants. We expect that this will grow over the next six to 12 months as we apply for HMGP grants or Hazard Mitigation Program grants. If I use too many anachronisms, please just tell me and I'll explain what they are. Police, we have a number of different outstanding grants as the, as I stated, with the fourth quarter and the, as well as the first quarter. We've grown the grant program in police to 23 active grants. And with parks, again, TDC grants are the majority of the outstanding grants that have been awarded to us over the last several years. Public Works, along with the Sun Trail Grant that we've applied for, all are sidewalk-related. And with utilities, we do have the largest one that's out there that we're working on right now is the American Rescue Plan Act, which was $25.4 million. And of course, we have the finance grants that are the Hurricane Ian FEMA grants that we've applied for. And we've been awarded a certain dollar value, at least 50% of some of the ones that we've requested to draw from, and we're working on more. Thank you. And I'm here for any questions on the first quarter.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Mason on the first quarter report? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mason.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, it looks like our next agenda on item B3, Quarterly Park GO Bond Update. Mr. City Manager.
As you introduced the topic, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the next item is to bring you up to speed on where we are with implementation of the parks' GO Bond Program. And so Mr. Paul Klingon, once he's done uploading his presentation, we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Here we go. Thank you, Paul Klingon, Capital Improvements Director. All right, here's just a quick summary of where we are with the parks. The majority of the parks are in construction and we're proposing bidding for those three. So we're down to the last two, Tropicana and Yacht Club, as far as the permitting. All right, so Cultural Park, here's the original scope. When I'm talking about the budget, I'm talking about the construction budget. And Cultural was bid with Gator, so we split the contingency, but that can be shared amongst the two parks.
So if I can just interrupt Mr. Klingon for one second. Mr. Mayor, members of council, last night we provided you some additional information with regard to the funding of the various parks. So you have a document that kind of looks like this that provides you the initial budget estimates that were contemplated back in 2018, and then the actual or current estimates based on the contract awards that have been approved by city council, or as in the case of several parks that have yet to be bid out, the estimated costs adjusted by Mr. Klingon's staff to account for additional inflationary pressures that we've been experiencing. So, again, when Mr. Klingon just mentioned the budget for Cultural and Gator, keep in mind, just compare that to where we are, where we were with our initial estimates from 2018, just for, you know, just for your reference. Thank you, Mr. Klingon.
If you would, Mr. Klingon, if you have that information with you, if you could, in your presentation, give us what the recommendations were made back initially as far as the cost valuation compared to where the contracts were issued, just so we, not only can we have that information.
And you're talking about the initial GO Bond estimate?
Yes, the recommendations that were outlined, I believe, in the 2018 referendum.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay.
If you have that information.
Yeah, I do. I have it in front of me. The best way to, all right, so Cultural, you can see the budget for Cultural was, construction was $3 million, and the initial estimate in 2018 was $4.5 million. And Cultural, we're proposing some additional scope, replacing the trees damaged by Hurricane Ian, adding some new trees. And we did just find out today that our arborist secured a grant for 60 additional trees through the, the, yes, thank you, the Arbor Day Foundation Grant. So that's good news that we're getting that grant. Adding some shade over the existing benches, exercise equipment, install a perimeter sidewalk, which Public Works is going to do, and then curb and landscape three medians. We're in the, in the process of obtaining quotes for that. Gator Trails Park, again, was bid out with Cultural, and you can see the budget there, the construction budget. Gator was in 2018, $2.5 million. Again, that substantially.
Can I interrupt you just for a second? You know, I pulled the ordinance back 38-18 that we approved back on June 18th of 2018, and the numbers that you are mentioning are a little different. When I reviewed the ordinance back in 2018, I believe you said Cultural Park was $4 million?
$4.5.
Yeah, and in the ordinance, it specifies $2.8 million for both Cultural Park and Gator Circle Park. I was just curious where we got that $4 million number from.
I think I'll ask Mark Mason. Let's see here. Oh, he did luckily. These were the numbers I had gotten off that's on the website for the, for the budget comparing to what was set aside.
Okay.
We'll have to investigate. You know, the bottom line is it was still the $60 million.
Right, okay.
So Gator Trails substantially complete, when I say substantially complete for Cultural and Gator, that means we've taken substantial use of the park, and we still had some punchless things and Hurricane Ian came in. So we're also proposing for Gator that replaced the trees damaged by Hurricane Ian because we took beneficial use. We own those trees unfortunately. Add some new trees and vegetation, add shade over existing benches, add shade over existing exercise equipment. So we're presently obtaining the costs, and I had included in our table about $650,000 for those two parks for that additional scope. So that's in the estimate of where we are with the overall parks budgets. All right, Geofreeder is complete, and that budget was $686,000. And from what I had in the information for 2018, that was $470,000. So that, we still have some contingency left in that park. Del Prado Linear Park is almost complete, so we should be substantially complete in February. That budget was the 1.4, the construction, and in 2018, it was $1 million. Oh, we did have an extension due to supply chain issues, LCC and Hurricane Ian. The main supply chain issue was the prefabricated bathrooms that we ordered through the contractors, and that was so they were all consistent across all the parks. But by going with a prefabricated bathroom, we saved almost half a million dollars per bathroom. So there was some issues with the manufacturer, and we had to switch manufacturers on the bathrooms. All right, Sands Park, similar time extension on that due to the same reasons, mainly the bathroom, prefabricated bathroom in Hurricane Ian. And you can see the construction budget versus Sands, we had 3.6 in the initial estimate. Joe Cove Yellow Park, the, that was a construction budget of $2 million. Again, with the extension on that, the main issue being the prefabricated bathroom and the Hurricane Ian, and substantial completion in March. Joe Cove Yellow, we had $2.4 million in 2018 as compared to the two. And Joe Cove Yellow, too, we had, I apologize, it's not on here, is we had some additional exotic removal required. All right, Yellow Fever Creek, that is being built as we're here, so that completion is in August. That has a construction budget of $6 million versus $3.9 in 2018. Lake Kennedy Racket Center, that one there, we noticed to proceed in March, that had a budget, you can see construction budget with both phases of $11 million. And Lake Kennedy was just under $5 million. That was set aside for that in 2018. Festival Park, proposed bidding in February, we have received the permits. Do you want me to mention what the budget is? I don't have the bids for these ones. Okay. So Festival Park, we had $5.8, and I can tell you, we're estimating from the table, $10 million. And again, this is from the recent bids that have come in comparing. Lake Mead, proposed bidding in March, we've received all the permits. Lake Mead set aside was $6.5 million in 2018. We're proposing that the estimate would come in about $9.5. Crystal Lake Park, bidding in March, all the permits are received. Crystal Lake was $3.1 in 2018. We're estimating $5.7. Tropicana Park, we're waiting on the Army Corps permits in South Water Water Management District. We did have, we do have the start of an eagle's nest in the southwest corner, and that is two young eagles, and we've been working with our staff and ecologists and environmental people, and we can do a take after May because it's starting out. So we're still trying to get all the details on that. Tropicana, we're proposing, it'll cost $4.2 million, and that budget was from, our estimate from 2018 set aside was $2.9. And then the last on the list, which has shifted and no longer part of the GO Bond, we had budgeted $10.9 for the Yacht Club. And as you can see, we're still waiting on the permits, and this will be discussed in greater detail at the winter retreat in January. So I can open up the questions, can go over the estimated costs.
Thank you. I'll now open up council for any discussion, council members. Anything, I was looking at my paperwork while you were going through your presentation, the, as a part of the 2018, 38-18 ordinance, and they had incorporated the Cape Coral Parks Master Plan 2016 current recommendations. I guess my question to staff is, because all of those numbers are much lower than the numbers that you had given us, so maybe as a follow-up, Mr. City Manager, you can take a look at that and just advise council where we come up with the initial numbers that Mr. Klingon had mentioned in his presentation compared to what was actually incorporated in the ordinance, and just so we know. And the reason that I'm asking this question, I'm well aware that our cost overrides are going to be much higher than anticipated. You know, that's a given. I'm just trying to see where we are with those inflated costs for each one of these parks. You know, we have several parks that we haven't completed, so we know we have more to come. We know that we have a set amount of $60 million to work with. So I'm just trying to get a good understanding where we are in 2023 in relation to 2018.
I can share the spreadsheet I did? I have this?
Yeah, I have that same spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
But what I'm saying is when you look on your, the numbers on this number where it says GO Bond Initial Estimates 2018, that could be the case, but when you look at the ordinance, there's different numbers.
Oh, okay, we'll go through.
There's different valuations that were incorporated into the 38-18. I'm just curious.
Okay.
Maybe from, it's somewhere, because this actually says the Parks Master Plan 2016. So maybe that was initially in '16, maybe it was changed in '18.
We'll get the history on that.
But like I said, it's a little confusing because that was incorporated in the ordinance. That's where I got that information.
All right. So we'll follow up on that. Still, we ultimately had the $60 million, and you can see, when you have a chance to digest the table I put together, you can certainly get us any questions. But where we are, trying to estimate the future parks that still need to be bid.
And don't forget, council members, that you also have about $12.8 million set aside in your designated reserve to cover any parks' GO Bond cost inflation. So it's the $60 million plus the $12.8 that you have set aside. So that's what we've got to deal with, which is, brings you roughly about the $73 million mark at the moment.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. So if I understand, at 30,000 feet, going to the very bottom of the submarine, we show the GO Bond of $60,152, and we show current reality at $73,797. But that $73,797 does not include the Yacht Club, which was originally included in the $60,152.
The $10 The 10 million, the 10.9 that was slated for the yacht club is sliding over to the GO bond projects. The yacht club will be its own project.
Right. And so the money that was initially allocated through the GO bond, that would be contributory to the yacht club, was moved to the other initiatives inside of the GO bond. And on top of that were 13 million dollars over the GO bond.
Correct.
Okay.
That's coming out of the general fund restricted reserves.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood the detail inside of the summary.
Understood.
Thank you.
And to give you a little bit of historical, that a council member, council, we had about the 12 million that the city manager had mentioned. And council, the previous council, pretty much put a identifier on that 12 million dollars to utilize for any additional expenses for the 60 million dollar Parks GO bond. Now, the 10.9 million dollars that you mentioned, you know, we did slide it over to the remaining parks that we have on our list, but it's still incorporated in that 60 million dollar number. The only additional funding that we have at this time is the 12 million dollars that the city manager had mentioned. And that's how we get to the almost 73 million dollar. But you have to remember, we've taken out all of the monies, the 10.9, from the, or at least the previous council did, out of the yacht club and moved it over. So we still have that piece to identify a funding mechanism for.
So you have in, on a gross amount, the 10.9 for the yacht club, but you have to deduct from that some of the costs that we have already incurred for the yacht club? I think it's a couple hundred thousand, right, Paul, for design services and also CM at risk pre-construction services?
Yes.
About 400 or so?
Well, it's 2.1 million for Kimbley Horn for the yacht club design and 331,000 for Wright. That is in the math that gets me to the 73. So right now, that's being paid for under the parks' GO bond fund.
So when you approve the financing option for the yacht club, you also approved a reimbursement resolution that allows us, when we, if and when we issue debt, we'll be able to reimburse ourselves for any costs that we have expended on the project. So when we issue debt, this money that we've expended out of the GO bond will be reimbursed by the debt that we issue.
So shouldn't those dollars that you've just expressed have been invested in the yacht club, show up in the current expense column?
So it is. It's down below, right, Paul?
Yeah, it's highlighted.
In a tan color, Kimbley Horn Yacht Club. And then where it says Wright CMAR, the costs are identified there for you.
So if that 2.4 million rolls into the yacht club debt, that's 2.4 million that could go towards GO bond parks if needed.
So if you remember, prior to the hurricane, I would say that we were at 90% design on the yacht club. We were just waiting on the various permits and making the last minute tweaks to the design based on what DEP and Army Corps required us to do in the permits. So the project was basically designed. And then the hurricane hit, and now conversation for a different day, which will be next Thursday afternoon. So the things are different now with the yacht club than they were before the hurricane. Does that help give you a little bit of background?
Thank you.
And another question that I have, if no one else has any questions. The other question that I have, just refresh our memories, how many new parks? And how many parks were we making modifications at our existing parks through the Parks GO bond?
Oh, new parks?
You don't have to list them, just how many?
Oh, okay.
Seven?
I think seven new neighborhood parks, Mr. Mayor, three new community parks. And then Yellow Fever Creek, I had on the side, I didn't know what that was. So I'm going to call it a community park. So four new community parks, seven new neighborhood parks, and then improvements to 19 existing parks.
In relation to the 11 parks total that are on the list, how many have we completed or issued a contract for out of the 11?
Out of the 11?
I know, I see on here, you have several that listed as completed.
Let me do this.
I'm counting seven.
Seven completed or contracts issued? And the four that are left over, of course, we know the yacht club.
So we have, the ones that we have not issued any bids yet, Crystal Lake, Lake Mead, Tropicana, and Yacht Club. I have Festival.
Yeah, if you look at your screen, that's kind of a quick summary of where we are, construction versus bidding versus permitting.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Councilmember Hayden.
Paul, real quick, on Tropicana, just so the public's familiar, because we don't hear the word take a lot, especially when it comes to eagles. You said the start of a nest. Can you explain the timeline and what that will mean in terms of the development of this park with those eagles there?
Well, the way I understood is, is the male and female are young, they can't produce offspring yet. So they're putting this nest together. So apparently, from our discussions we've had, we can do a take and there's a process. And that would have to be, though, after nesting season. And so while we're in there, we'll make sure that we remove any of the trees we need to that won't impact the Tropicana Park as we're waiting for these other permits. So also, that particular tree would eventually, if that took as a nest, that would impact Seven Islands also. Did that answer your question?
Explain take.
Oh, take. You know what? It was, I want to set Mark.
Yeah, I wasn't going to mention that.
Mark Redenow is our project manager. He was in the meetings with the environmentalists. Maybe he can explain a little better what that process is.
Mark Redenow, capital improvements. The take basically means that once the eagle's gone, we will destroy the nest and then the tree will be taken down.
However, we did discuss in a meeting as recent as yesterday amongst various staff members, the possibility of erecting some sort of an artificial tree pole or what have you, that could serve as a eagle's nest in the future. You know, I know I've seen those types of structures in the northwest part of the city.
Yeah, that was kind of my point. Eagles have a tendency to return to the same.
Correct. I didn't, I didn't have a chance to update the city manager on this. We did have a conversation. And putting something back permanent, that's fine, but it will definitely, could impact the Seven Islands and other development. So you have to keep that in mind.
If I could also add, we, in past situations, we have put up structures, temporary structures for relocating nests. Eagles do not like to come back to them. Every time that's been done, basically, they're taken over by an osprey. So eagles prefer the natural trees.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for the update with the Parks GO bond. Move on to item B4, quarterly capital improvements update. I think we have three components of that. For A will be the capital improvement projects update first.
Thank you. For the record, Paul Kling, Director of Capital Improvements. This is just, we've seen this before, just a quick update of what projects we primarily do. North One West UEP will be having more discussions later today, but all the bids are received. The design for the east is 80% complete. North Three UEP, we are going through that process for the North Three design, which is permitting and bidding, which is estimated at 15 million. All right, so Fire Station 13, we got the GMP in at 7.7 million, and our budget was 5.8 million. So we did meet with Wright Construction last week. They're going back to see what they can do with the GMP, but to drop that price. And it certainly won't drop it to the 5.8 million. So this is something that, discussion with council to move forward. I don't know if Rob wants to comment on the Fire Station 13.
So we're at a point, Mr. Mayor, that staff is going to need some guidance from council on how to proceed with Station 13. So you know, you've budgeted about 5.8 million dollars. That includes $220,000 in design, leaving, according to my estimates, about 5.5 million for construction. So we're coming in short by about 1.9 million. The recommendation from Mr. Mason is that we proceed, because we had planned to issue debt for this particular fire station, and then the debt was going to be funded by both the fire assessment and the general fund. Given that we've already ordered, probably 18 months ago, a new ladder truck that is going to be stationed at this facility, both the fire chief and your finance director recommend that we continue with this project and just issue additional debt to cover the full cost of the project.
Okay, I'll now open up the floor for that discussion on the firehouse. I guess at some point, we'll just go down the line after, if we have any discussion, to get a consensus from council, Councilmember Hayden.
Sure, quick, can impact fee money be used to cover those additional costs or not?
Based on the proportionate share, Mr. Mason, can you provide a little bit more explanation on the sharing of the costs between the two funds?
We would use impact fees to the extent that they're available. Right now, the bulk of the fees, as a matter of fact, all of the fees are going towards the fire training facility. So if it's available, we'll use it. If it's not, you know, the pledge will be a covenant of budget appropriate and utilize any legally available resources that we have available to make the debt payments.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Stanky.
Well, I, while I wasn't here when this was approved, I'm sure that there wasn't a, there was a public safety need to place this fire station. None of us can control inflation, but we still have the responsibility for public safety. So I would see no reason why we don't find some way to continue the process for the sake of public safety.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. Public safety is our number one priority, provide those services to our community. It's unfortunately, we find ourselves in economic times that we're, we are in, but we just can't halt the project because of that. So for me, I'll support the initiative to find other revenue sources, whether it be impact fees or exclusively additional debt, to make sure that we provide a service in that area. I know you weren't here, Councilmember Stanky, but one of the concerns was response times. So when that presentation was provided to council, there was a higher response time than what was outlined with the chief, where his goals are with response times within our city. And that's why this particular fire station was moving forward.
Thank you.
So we'll start with Councilmember Long and get that consensus that the city manager's looking for.
Yeah, I would agree with the points made. I think we have an obligation to continue to proceed forward with it regardless of the inflated cost.
I'm in agreement too, because public safety is the number one priority for us here in the community.
I'll just say yes.
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 Thank you. All right, so the next project is the fire training facility. So that GMP is being developed, and we should get that in February. Our budget was 9 million, but there's a high probability it'll be over that budget. Then the police training facility, we have the 13 million dollar budget. We'll be getting the GMP in February. We'll see where that comes in.
And if you're, you were council members, I don't think you were on council. Last time we discussed this, we actually ended up moving the site for this facility for a variety of reasons. Number one, some challenges associated with constructing at the original site, but also we experienced some cost savings by moving the location of the facility from way up on the borderline of Cape Coral and Canada. And we actually moved it closer to the heart of the city, which is over by the Northwest Water Treatment Plant. And so that allowed us to save over one and a half million dollars because all utilities were already there. We didn't have to extend utilities up to Durden.
All right, the new fleet facility, Weston Sampson, is approximately 90% complete on the study. So once we get some recommendations for the location, type of facility, number of bays, we'll certainly be coming back to council at a future meeting or COW to explain what the study has determined in the costs. Facility's master plan in January in the next agenda from Stan Tech, the 237,000 fee, that's for the approval, is coming on the next agenda. And that's for the space needs throughout the city. All right, the 140 bridge rehabilitation program, that's 85% complete. This now includes the inspections after Hurricane Ian. And again, once we get an understanding of what has to be done with all 140 bridges, we'll be coming back to council with some kind of presentation in prioritizing the bridges and what that budget will be.
You stop right there on the bridges real quick. How many bridges, because I know I had a question about that this week or last week, where one bridge was damaged by a barge, an apparent barge, and we made that repair. And then there was a, Hurricane Ian had caused some damage at the same particular bridge.
Correct.
Have we identified how many bridges in our city out of the 140 were damaged by Hurricane?
There's two, two on the list. The one at Sands and the second one is located. Thank you, Bill.
Good morning. Bill Corby, Design and Construction Manager. So there were actually two bridges that sustained damage from Hurricane Ian, which require immediate repairs. Those are the structures off Surfside and Sands, Surfside and 25th. There are also 18 other bridges which sustained damages over $5,000, however, are not in need of immediate repair and will be done as part of routine maintenance.
Well, would those repairs be able to be reimbursed as a result of the hurricane?
Yeah, that's the goal. We're working with Hagerty, our disaster recovery consultant, to ensure we meet all the requirements to secure as much reimbursement as possible.
Thank you.
The 28 wares, similar timetable, 80% complete. Those got looked at, there wasn't anything significant from Hurricane Ian that was noted at the time. But again, coming back to council with an update for prioritization, we're working with utilities, they're controlling the wares and what needs to be done. JC Park, we do have some concept plans, and those will be shared with you at the January 2023 winter retreat. D and D is another topic that's going to be discussed at the January winter retreat in more detail. Miscellaneous capital improvements, the Gulf Course, Coral Oaks, concrete and asphalt car paths are completed. We're working on the Sierra Vista Modular Restroom, that's on schedule for completion in June. Just started the Burnstall Road Boat Ramp. Just started the Burnstall Road boat ramp, so improvements. We've certainly been providing technical support for the South Spreader Waterway Environmental Improvement and Sustainability Program permit. And then our proposed twenty twenty-three projects. So these projects here with the fire station, aquatic center, Oasis multipurpose field, skate park building, and Andalusia, these are all RFPs we're working on to get out in January, February, and March for either design services or study services. Any questions?
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I have a question. With the fleet building design, that they can take into consideration, a lot of the design will be obsolete in a few years. I mean, we have all these manufacturers for cars and trucks saying that they'll be fully electric within a few more years. So there's no more oil changes, there's no transmissions, there's no more brakes, there's no more, I mean, I can go on and on and on. What I don't want to see us do is pay to build something that pretty much right when it gets finished, the majority of the things we paid for will be obsolete.
Understood. That will be discussed in the report, in the study of, you know, planning for that future, what that means.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions regarding capital improvement projects? Thank you, Mr. Clinton. So the next item on the agenda is four B, which is Public Works.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchisen, Public Works Director. Here's the first quarter update. First, I'd like to apologize for some late minute changes that were sent out yesterday, adapting to the new format, adding some budget and scheduling things. We're just getting on the same page, so. And with that, there was one change that I'll point out to you as we go through the slides. Here's the programs that are projects that Public Works is working on, and we'll go through each of them independently. So the Sun Trail is the shared use non-motorized trail. Looking at the boxes in the big map, Phase One, that project is started in May of twenty-one. We're anticipating final completion in February of this year, so another couple of months. Phase Two, we have design completed, and we're in the funding queue for twenty twenty-five. So two years from now, that Phase Two will be constructed. And then, right now, we're out reviewing RFPs for the design of Phase Three, which gets us from Del Prado to Twenty-Fourth. So specifically on the Phase One, which is from Burnstall Road over to basically Kismet area, the contract completion date for that was December twenty-second. Here is where I had an error in what was reported. It had said on schedule, however, when we're reviewing what should be reported, this is act, this project is actually behind schedule, so it would have been done in December. It is looking like it's going to be wrapped up in February, and it is coming in under budget. And then there was, in addition to that, there was some four-laning on Kismet at Chiquita. And so you have the additional two westbound lanes on the north side of the road that was done kind of in conjunction with that project. That's going to be wrapping up at the same time as that Phase One project. Just a quick review of just kind of the schedule for that project. This project actually started in twenty seventeen and should be wrapping up here in the next couple of months. And so I just wanted to kind of, if you had a chance to kind of look at this, maybe not, but just to get an idea of what a capital improvement project takes when you require having to go out for design services, solicit under state statute C C N A, do the design, go into permitting, and then eventually bidding for construction. You have to, you have to put all those pieces together. And so for an example, a project like that, you're looking at, this started in twenty seventeen. This is some of our local, our operating budgets. We have a six and a half million dollars for road repaving and rehabilitation. These are on schedule and under budget. We have till September thirtieth to complete these. However, the local road repaving, we're looking at starting in May as long with the major. Then we have some smaller spot paving contracts. We fix smaller portions of road that is intended to start in June. And then some pavement restoration, which is a rejuvenator that fills in the fines on the road. We're looking for late summer. Nicholas Parkway East and West, Nicholas Parkway West, right now is currently behind schedule. The completion date for that was July of twenty-two. There's been several reasons that that's been delayed. However, we're looking at, again, this one also completing in February, and it is coming in under budget at six point three million dollars.
We did have final completion on the eleventh.
Oh, you, final completion on the eleventh of January? Okay, so since then, we have final completion on the eleventh for the West. On the east, we're looking at, on schedule and under budget at six point eight, and this one is intended to be concluded in April. The alley reconstruction and paving project that started a couple of weeks ago, we're looking at finalizing this in May. Right now, that's on schedule and under budget at two point four million. Median landscaping, the Rose Garden project is under construction. Right now, it's on schedule, under budget at just over a million. Chiquita was delayed due to the hurricane. We're anticipating starting in the next week, and that one is anticipated to be done in June. Right now, it's on schedule and under budget from notice to proceed. Embers Parkway is in procurement for the design of the access management. That engagement is sitting at sixty-eight thousand. Once we're done with the access management, then we'll go out in an RFP for the actual design of the landscaping. Same thing is in process with Country Club. And this is just an example of some of the stuff that's happening at Rose Garden. Sidewalk program was, is two and a half million dollars last year, two and a half million dollars this year. We are doing Tropicana, Cedus, and Skyline in-house. We're complete on Cedus, we're complete on Skyline. Tropicana is basically a block away from being complete. In working with finance right now on how to report whether or not those are behind schedule or under budget, essentially, we appropriate a bucket of money. City crews do this all year long, and sometimes they get pulled for maintenance on other projects. There's repairs. So these are operational projects. We're going to see how we can fit this into the new budget and schedule timing. On the rest of the sidewalks, we advertise the RFP for the design-build-delivery method, where we are anticipating proposals due in the next couple of weeks. And then we're going to evaluate those proposals and then eventually bring them back to council for award. The goal with that is to complete, what we've issued out is basically eight miles worth of sidewalks, the balance of what the city crews are not doing, and basically have that done within a year. So this new methodology is hopefully going to speed up our delivery method for sidewalks. Water quality projects, we had the ten bubble curtains. We have not yet sent divers in the water to assess the underwater damage. We are still doing canal cleanup. Once the canal cleanup is complete along the river, and we know that those areas are clear, then we're going to send divers in to just check on that and provide an update on the bubble curtains. Palmetto Pines Golf Course, this was the relocation of the intake structure. We're working with the owner and maintenance manager for the course. This is behind schedule. There's been several design changes along the process, as well as the hurricane set us back a couple of months. However, we have been in contact and are restarting this project to bring it to completion. Been based in Mooring Field, we're in negotiations with the contractor. We're going to have a more detailed presentation on Justice Project at the winter retreat. Chiquita Boulevard North widening, this is at the intersection of Kismet and Chiquita, kind of four-laning that and aligning all the travel lanes and through lanes to make that instead of like an oblique intersection. Right now, this is about thirty percent complete. It's anticipated to be on the contract in June, and it's on schedule and under budget. Stormwater operations projects, we have a drainage project that's in design on Hancock that is anticipated to be done in July, and right now it is on schedule and under budget. The goal of this project is to improve the drainage and flooding during major rain events. Property manager was working on twelve thirty-one Lafayette. There were two, one project, two individual procurements. There was a facade renovation, restoration that was fifty-two thousand, that was completed in September. And then there was a re-roof that was completed in November. Within this first quarter, the total budget was seventy-two thousand, and that was all completed on time and under budget. And then this one will likely come off next because that project is done. We had to replace the skate park trailer. Right now, that was installed in September, and we're doing a monthly lease on the rental of that until we get the new one built. The survey division was working on modernizing our datum. We entered into a contract with the state of Florida, and that was a three-year project. Right now, we're in year two. We're on schedule and under budget. That was a five hundred and ninety thousand dollar agreement. And you see those, all the little black dots that are kind of promulgated throughout the city, those are where the benchmarks were placed. With that, we'll open it up for any questions or comments. Oh, and I'm sorry, the source of my numbers for the budget are, come directly from the contracts that were approved by city council.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I just wanted to make note of and commend you and your department on the vast majority of your projects that are on time and under budget. That's excellent to hear.
Thank you. And the two that we have that are, I should have mentioned this, the two that we have that are behind schedule, my staff and I are taking appropriate actions contractually under the contract, so there are penalties for the delays.
Just one quick question I had, Mike, was, you know, I know there's different ways to bid a project, and one of those ways is a design-build type approach. Doesn't appear that we do that too often here in the city. If we had that type of methodology moving forward, would it be a cost savings to the city, number one? And number two, would it, which I think it would, would probably narrow the amount of time from the date that we start the project to at least the completion of the bidding process? Would that be a beneficial approach, that something we should take a look at as a city?
Sure. Construction delivery methods vary. I mean, you have traditional design-bid-build, which is a multi-step process. Design-build kind of folds the design and the construction in together. You have construction manager, delivery methods, project manager, program manager, I mean, all the way to basically full outsourcing of the bidding and everything. All of those, you're buying time and transferring risk. The true cost of the project should ultimately be the true cost. It's just, are you trying to shorten your schedule, which is, you need more resources, meet more, more staff, more mobilization, more logistics? But ultimately, what we do in Public Works was specifically the sidewalks. So just to expand on that a little bit, we were using a traditional design-bid-build methodology. And so we would basically go survey an entire road segment. We would design that road segment. We would issue that to a bid, award the contract, and then construct it. Last year, we shifted that methodology to a design-build. So basically, we issue a design, basically a design criteria packet, which is, we want the sidewalk to be five foot off the edge of pavement. We want it to be so far below the edge of pavement, so much elevation so that, you know, it meets A D A standards. How do you approach a utility box? How do you approach a road? How do you approach a driveway? And basically, give that to the contractor. And so then they basically build it, and they give you an as-built set of plans as they're doing it. It does, the intent is to increase speed and cut down on the amount of reviews, time, thirty, sixty, ninety review. So in essence, it should eliminate hours on the design side and also eliminate time in the project schedule to get rid of the actual design bid portion. It's all done in one piece. So, you know, it's very appropriate for the type of contract that we have here. It's not a complex project. It's horizontal, it's all visual, it's nothing underground, nothing inside a, we're not doing a plant with a bunch of chemistry. So depending on what you're doing, different project delivery methods may be beneficial. We're working with procurement to set this up so that in the future, that's just basically how we do our sidewalk program, is to just take that design criteria package and put it out. One thing that we are, I mean, they come with pros and cons. We haven't done this with sidewalks yet. So we're letting the industry know in the bid that we want it to be done by twelve thirty-one. However, we still have to award the contract, so that'll take a couple more months. So we're kind of interested in seeing how they react. We've done the math, and we've done the numbers on how many feet a day output that would be required. Would be, so they would need at least two crews in the city to complete that at basically eighty feet a day. So we're looking at, is there a way to structure it, to do, here's kind of the base bid, and then if nobody wants to submit on that because the timeline's too short, they don't have the staff available, do we go with something that's a fifteen or an eighteen month? So that we can at least evaluate, you know, getting them done.
All right, thank you. The other question I had was pertaining to the bubble curtains. You know, I know that we haven't evaluated to see if there was any damage, and we had to wait considerably. My understanding, all of the construction for the bubble curtains was completed pre-Hurricane Ian, correct?
I don't, I don't know if they got a hundred percent, there was one or, the one that doesn't have electric. So there's like some that require a generator all the way in the far north. I don't think that one was complete.
But all the in-water construction was completed?
Correct.
And the reason I ask this question is, what months of the year, and I would assume it's going to be rainy season because that's when you're more apt to have water releases from Lake O. What months out of the year do you feel that the bubble curtains will be the most utilized? And the reason I ask that question, you know, I know that debris cleanup in our four hundred miles of canals is approximately a six-month endeavor. I wouldn't want to wait until then, and then a rainy season gets here when we would probably utilize the bubble curtains if need be, if there was a, some type of a algae outbreak. So my concern is waiting that timeframe to do an assessment of whatever damage may or may not have occurred. So just a concern that I have, and I just wanted to get your opinion on that.
So typically, the rainy season starts in May and June, and then they start doing releases, you know, end of June, July, August, September. So typically, it's that, basically, leading right up to the peak of hurricane season when they're trying to, you know, they're doing releases. Having said that, you know, we're looking at that low sum and trying to advocate for a more normalized release of flows, which would mean that, you know, they, instead of pulse releases, you have kind of a level load. So then it will just be basically contingent on the water conditions and the algae. When the temperatures get right, the nutrient levels are there. When there's a lot of runoff coming in from, you know, the farmlands and agriculture that generate that nutrient source for the algae. So we're planning on typically July, August, and September. However, once, once we get that generator in place and we're able to run the curtains, our contract or our permit with the Army Corps basically has us doing kind of a test run of a year to do the acoustic monitoring of the sawfish. So we'll have some operating information on that. But as far as the timeline goes for waiting to put the divers in to make sure But as far as the timeline goes for waiting to put the divers in, to make sure that we're not, you know, if there is any underwater work, one of the things that we're concerned about was that, is some of the like cleanliness on the water? Not that it's toxic, but, you know, there was concerns of, you know, flesh-eating bacteria that were being reported. And so typically, when you have these cold fronts, the water column kind of clears up and anything suspended drops as the, basically the, you don't have a thermocline where you have hot or fresh water sitting on the top and cold or less, or more salty on the bottom, it kind of flips, and so all that stuff drops out. It's why you get really clear water this time of year. So we were just kind of waiting for that to happen, and then we were going to send the divers in. So it should be the end of this month or next month.
Okay, that's good to hear, because, you know, with the permitting process that we went through last year, you know, just to get the permits, we kind of missed the envelope or the time period where they would be the most effective. I just wanted to make sure that hopefully we don't have a repeat of that this year. We have them up and running. I guess it's like anything, you, something that you have, you hope you never need, but you want to make sure if you have the need that it's available and up and running.
Yeah, you know, with the storm surge, what we, you know, a lot of stuff that was underwater, you know, the, we didn't, we're hopeful that because it came up, the storm surge was way up, that they were, instead of being ten feet underwater, now they were twenty, that that was deep enough to be away from any, you know, surface agitation or irritation. We just don't know. I mean, the airlines are there, we can see that, the airlines are there, we just don't know if underwater they've been shifted or pulled off, you know, the actual diffuser, so.
And my last question is pertaining to open-throat stormwater catch basins. If I recall correctly, about two years ago, council had set aside about a million dollars for replacing some of those open-throat-type storm basin as a water quality improvement throughout the city. Just curious where we are on that, and if you don't know, that's okay, you can get that to me at a later time, where we are with that. If I'm not mistaken, we probably have incorporated that in our FDEP permit, our water quality project that we've applied for through them. So that's probably incorporated within that project also. But the million dollars that we did allocate about two years ago, where we are with that particular project.
Sure, I don't have that as we sit here, but what I'll do is I'll add that on the next quarter for, under the water quality projects.
Okay.
Catch basin replacement.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, Jeff Pearson, utilities director. This presentation is pertaining to the utilities department, capital improvement projects. First project I'd like to discuss is the Fort Myers reclaimed water transmission main, which is also known as the Kaluza Hatchie Connect Project. This project, the overland section from Horton Park to Everest began last March, and we only have about two-hundred-and-fifty feet left to complete that section. The sub-aquas section, the PO was originally issued June twenty-second, and we have been working with the construction company, which is Amisi, who will be doing the horizontal directional drill under the river. They will begin that project beginning, I know I have February here, it's been shifted a little bit due to material delays to, we believe by the middle to the end of March. We would also, we're planning on doing a groundbreaking for this project and inviting the representatives from the Water Management District, DEP, and potentially the mayor's office, I mean, the governor's office, sorry. We anticipate substantial completion for both phases of this project by February of two thousand twenty-four. I'd also like to point out, thus far, we have received almost twelve-and-a-half million dollars in grants. The next project is the Southwest Water Reclamation Ops Building and Maintenance Building. The estimated, the actual construction cost, the bid cost is fifteen-point-six million. We've received two-point-seven million in South Florida Water Management District grant funding. This project is about eighty-five percent complete due to some damage from Hurricane Ian. The contractor, Wharton Smith, is pretty much done repairing the damage sustained from Hurricane Ian, and we anticipate final construction completion in the next three to four months. Next project is the reservoir pipeline and pump station. The engineering cost is eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. We received a one-and-a-half million dollar grant from the state to complete engineering design. The status of this project is, it is, the final design will be complete this month. We just received ninety percent design. As soon as they get our comments back, we will have a hundred percent design for that project. If we move forward with this project, we would bid it this summer of twenty-three and complete the project by the fall of two thousand twenty-four. Next project is the Nicholas Parkway West and East Water Main Improvements. Both of these sections are a hundred percent complete, the water main piece of the project. And this one was completed under budget and on schedule. The next steps are to close that project out. The North Utilities Complex UCD Admin Building and Warehouse, the estimated cost at this time is fifteen million. We advertised for an RFP. It's going to be, we've looked at it briefly last week at the SAC. We are going to re-review this again at an upcoming SAC meeting. Like to move on to the CRA Sewer Force Main and Master Pump Station one hundred. This is the ARPA-funded project that Mr. Mason spoke about during his grant update. This project, the Force Main section is under construction. It's on schedule and under, and on budget. Master Pump Station one hundred, we have to re-advertise for bid this, the end of this month. It was delayed due to only one bid being received. Currently, we're on schedule and on budget, but we, you know, until we get the bids, that's really to be determined, because the bids could come in higher. The one bid that we received for Master Pump Station one hundred was substantially higher, but it was only one bid, so hopefully we'll get more bidders and those bids will come down. The next steps, of course, are to rebid it and to complete construction. Next project is the Palm Tree Water Main and Force Main Improvements. Estimated cost is thirteen-point-one million, and this project was awarded by council. It is under construction. It's on schedule, under budget, and we anticipate completing this project by November of this year. Next project is the North RO Plant Supply Wells. Estimated cost is ten million. The engineering contract design is underway. It's on schedule, on budget at this time. We anticipate completing engineering design for up to five new wells and bid the project later on this year. I don't have a specific timeline on that yet, but we will in upcoming updates. Next project is the New Water Irrigation and Sanitary Sewer Utilities within the Pine Island Road Corridor West. Our estimated cost early on with this project is in the thirty-seven-point-five million-dollar range. The status is, we've advertised for design. It will go to the SAC in January of this year, and its design will be on schedule and on budget once we get that engineer on board. Next steps would be to begin design and complete construction during the year two thousand twenty-five. So we're really early on in this project development. Next project is the five-million-gallon expansion for the Southwest Water Rec Facility and Transmission Force Main along Veterans Parkway. Our early estimated cost is sixty-one million. However, staff recently advised me that bids could be higher at this time, because we're seeing construction bids coming in substantially higher in other areas, so that cost is subject to change. The status of this project is, we selected a design consultant at the SAC. CMAR Request for Proposals is in procurement. The schedule would be to complete this by December of two thousand twenty-five. As far as the budget, we still have to negotiate that, and the next steps will be to select a construction manager at risk this month or next month, initiate the design beginning this, over the next few months, and construction completion would be in, during the winter of two thousand twenty-five. Some of the projects completed this year, this past year, are the Pine Island Road reclaimed water tanks and booster station. This project was twelve-and-a-half million dollars with a two-point-two-six million-dollar South Florida Water Management District grant. And we completed Weir Twenty-Nine, which had a construction cost of nine-hundred thousand. This project allows us to store hundreds of millions of additional gallons of water in Basin Four, which is our largest freshwater basin, which also helps with the canal levels, maintaining them. And I'm available for any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Jeff, on the Kaluza Hatchie project, do we know how, do we know how the micro tunneling's coming along on the Fort Myers side? And does that tunneling need to be complete before they start the direct drill under the river?
Councilmember, the, that's a separate project. They're actually not going to be drilling under the river. Theirs is all upland.
Well, but they're micro tunneling on their side, on the upland.
For our project?
No, for the, on the Fort Myers side, right, construction is micro tunneling their part of the project to the river.
To, right, to the edge, by the bridge, right, where we're going to connect our section of pipe.
Correct.
Yes, sir, under the roads and whatnot.
But we don't know where they are on their construction.
You know, I've got a meeting with them in the next week. I'll have a better understanding of where they're at. At this time, I do not have a specific timeline of when they'll be completed with their side of the project.
Okay. But either way, when they get done with their upland work, the directional drill into the river can proceed even if they're not finished with their side of it?
Correct. Yeah, it's a separate and standalone project.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I wrote that same question down, Councilmember Hayden, because we know this is a partnership project. We can be a hundred percent completed, and if they're not, then basically the project goes nowhere. So that would be good information to have, to see where they are, since this is a partnership project, see where they are in the pipeline, no pun intended. But, so we have a good understanding when this project may be completed and up and running.
I will get that information and provide that to Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, sir, for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item four B five, Economic and Business Development Office Quarterly Report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it over to the city's Economic and Business Development Officer, Ms. Sharon Woodbury. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Sharon Woodbury, Economic and Business Development Officer. I'll go with the mouse. So just to give you a report overview, we'll talk about some of the key economic indicators, what's happening with construction activity, marketing activities, and our business attraction, retention, and expansion projects that are happening over the last year. So if we look at the key economic indicators, we'll start with the unemployment rates. And I pulled up Punta Gorda, we don't usually have Punta Gorda there for their unemployment rates, but as you can see, when you start to look at the months of September, October, November, Cape Coral, there was a spike of four-point-two percent. In relation to Florida, they were at two-point-seven percent. So certainly, I felt that the hurricane had something to do with that, but I did pull Punta Gorda to see that they're kind of on the same track in terms of the direction that the numbers were taking, but you'll see that it's starting to come down. When you look at the vacancy rates, retail were at two-point-one percent, office two percent, industrial point-nine percent. That's pretty consistent from what we've seen with our last quarterly report. There was about twenty percent basis point change with the office-industrial office. That vacancy rate went up, and industrial, it went down, but again, very minimal in terms of change.
So I just want to call your attention to industrial, a vacancy rate of less than one percent. It's amazing. It goes to what we've been saying for a long time, which is why we've been incentivizing industrial development, that clearly we need more inventory. If we are going to be successful in attracting businesses to the Cape, we need the development community to kick in and build more industrial space on their own, without the city having to incentivize projects to do that. Again, a one, less than one percent vacancy rate, there's no room at the end. That's basically, I mean, that's almost unheard of. I don't think I've ever worked in a community that has had such a low vacancy rate.
So just to add to that, this wasn't in the slide, but we were at our director's meetings discussing some of the projects that are happening and underway. And so for the agenda on the twenty-fifth, you'll see that we've been working with ABC Supply and Grayfin Development for their expansion. But Mike, I brought up a very interesting point. That was a ten-million-dollar expansion, and Mike mentioned that that was the first project of this size that had happened industrially in the last ten-plus years. So, you know, just to kind of give you some context of what we're talking about, we certainly are working to get more industrial space online. So when you look at the commercial construction values, first, we're looking at multifamily, and you'll see that there was a significant increase happening over the last three years from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. Pretty big jump for the Pretty big jump for the most recent year. We're talking about a sixty-eight percent increase for multifamily. So it's still driving a, a large part of the construction value that's happening. Industrial, we've seen some movement. There has been a little bit of increase happening, and I think we were at about thirty-four percent increase you'll see from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So they're building, but they're being quickly absorbed. And so that's good in, in one respect, that we've got some opportunity and that they're being, they're being filled quickly, but we need to expand that inventory. And when you look at the other commercial values, again, numbers going up, twenty twenty-three, we were at one point four billion. So when you look at this map, I thought it might be helpful for visual when looking at the activity that's happening in some of our spaces. So for office construction, you can see not a lot happening here. And we've got fifty thousand square feet that was recently developed and, and online, but that was over the last two years. Nothing happening for the next, next year, but we'll see that there's some additional square footage that's coming online when you look out a little bit further. I don't expect that office construction will see a lot in terms of expansion. We've, you know, certainly, we can see from our numbers that that's not happening here, but on a national basis, there, the market's adjusting to office construction with a lot of remote workers, companies are downsizing, and they're, they're not seeing the need for office space. In, in terms of where there's opportunity, I, I think that what we've seen in terms of trends are new construction, five-star type buildings, those are getting snatched up pretty quickly, but for those that are aging and, and older, it's going to be a challenge to, to get those moving. Industrial construction, again, not a whole lot happening, but you can see where we are in terms of the numbers. We've got one hundred and sixty-four thousand that's been delivered in, in the past, delivered for the next eight quarters, that's coming online, but we still need to put more in the pipeline. And retail construction, a lot of activity, you can see that it's centered along Pine Island Road. That's, you know, certainly where a lot of our growth is happening, and it's, it's feeding in terms of momentum and the activity that's happening there. It's the hotspot to be. And then when you look at commercial building permits, just to put some numbers to it, in fiscal year twenty-one, two hundred and forty-six permits issued, that was at, in excess of one hundred million. In twenty-two, that number went up to one hundred and eleven point eight million. And so for our marketing activities, we included some updates in our quarterly newsletter that goes out for the city. E-blasts, we had some print digital ads that are being placed, and we've looked at a few more different publications that you'll see in their, in our next quarterly report, that that number's going to increase. Special articles and informationals, we had five that we worked on for the past quarter. Business retention expansion visits, we were able to, in-depth, be able to take a, a visit to some of our sites, talk to our, our businesses, and I'll speak about one of them a little bit later. Networking events and marketing publications. So one of the things that I, I do want to highlight is our open for business campaign. And so back in November, we talked about this was a campaign that we were going to be kicking off, large amount of help in working with communications in that particular campaign. What drove this is the hurricane. And recognizing that we rely on our tourism industry, but there were a lot of people not from this area wanting to know what's happening here. Is there anything to do? Should they skip a year coming down here? And I thought that it was important for us as the city of Cape Coral to still encourage some of those visits. We need to support our small businesses. They rely heavily on our tourism industry. And so that was the reason for the open for business campaign. We started that with Small Business Saturday, just giving recognition to our small businesses. And just Friday, Melissa and her staff put, had put together a video, and we had our first posting featuring businesses. So that was Wicked Rum Distillery and Gator Mikes. So when we talk about business retention expansion, projects that are happening in permitting and under construction, when you look at these projects, these are all, you know, some of the same projects that we've seen. I won't repeat these, but you'll see that, that they're still online and under construction. We have a mix of some, some multifamily, recreational, and we have two industrial projects that are under construction. So one of the site visits that I mentioned, that I thought was a great story to share, is Ecological Laboratories. They're undergoing an expansion, but this is interesting in that we don't have a lot of representation in the area of biotech. And that is an industry that is really kind of leading the charge, particularly with the slowdown in the economy that's happening. They're predicting that biotech is going to be one of those that are able to have kind of their own path and grow. So with us having this company, I thought it was something that we should recognize. They have a really interesting path of how they develop their business and some proprietary formulas that they use to help with environmental, but very interesting, a great group of owners over their ecological labs. And so for planning and permitting, you'll see we have a lot of multifamily that's underway and in the permitting stages. Victory Park Phase One, that's one that we'll, we're looking to see a substantial impact from that project. I think this has probably been in planning and permitting for some time now. I do anticipate that there, well, they are further refining their project, and there will have more details about that coming soon, speaking with the, the representative for the owners. And then I wanted to call your attention to Lee Health. That's our newest project, that's new to our list, and they are expanding. It's their ICU expansion vertical. They're adding twelve ICU beds, and this is a nine million dollar investment that's happening. Certainly, I know you've talked to residents, you're more than aware of, of the need for the expansion in the healthcare industry to support our growth. So they are responding to that and planning for that growth. And then we have another multifamily, multifamily project. So over the last quarter, I wanted to feature some of our projects that had recent openings. Aspire Apartments was a, a beautiful project that came online, as well as The Palms. Sprouts Market had their grand opening in October. And we're seeing some very well-known businesses that are occupying Cape Coral Commons, and they're continuing to announce and have those projects come online. And Gator Mike's Dinosaur Falls. We were able to actually attend their ribbon cutting ceremony. Some of our council members, Councilman Stanky and Welsh, were there to see the, the features and the special attractions that were recently invested in there. Great spot for a family and, and good time that can be had there. They, as part of their scope, they have a volcano that actually erupts, and they expanded their golf course, and it's a dinosaur theme. Really cool project. So looking at the goals for next year, I'll be rolling out the Cape Competes facade program and talking to you conceptually about what that program can look like. That'll be in my next presentation. Building on the relationships with Lee County. So I am actively going to the Horizon Council and meeting with their Economic and Business Development Office monthly. We do have a, a great event that's happening. One of the goals in, in talking with the city manager was that we wanted to see more happening in Cape Coral. So this is a regional group, and based on, you know, just continuing to push and informing those relationships, we were successful in having their president's circle event that will be happening late January. It's recognizing industries, and it's just a great event to have here, and we'll be looking to have more occurring in Cape Coral.
And along the lines. That invitation has been forwarded to your office, and hopefully they're placing that on your calendars.
Additionally, we'll be looking to get the word out about our incentives and working to get those out as incentives in encouraging the expansion that we're looking for and the attraction. And then we are very close to issuing our RFP for the Economic Development Master Plan. This is something that's kind of been in the works for a while, predating me, but this was one of the priorities that I worked on for the last quarter and making sure that we get that over the finish line and have a, a good strategy put together for our next steps and, and how we want to, to direct our efforts. So I'll open it up for any questions.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. I, I just attended my first tourist development council meeting where I'm the council's liaison there, and I would just share with you that other municipalities in our county show up for a, a time called municipal input, where any of the municipalities are allowed to come and kind of just share with the council things that are going on in their area. And I think we have some exciting things going on as it relates to economic development and a lot of, you know, additional opportunities that people in other areas of the country would kind of like to know is going on, and, and the TDC puts themselves in a position of communicating that to others. So I think we, as a city, both from economic development as well as parks and recs, if, if, if we can put together and coordinate to let them know that we would have a presentation to make, to let people know where we, you know, where we stand on all the new and improved that is there, it'll give them some material to then share with others as they make their way around the country, inviting, you know, businesses and, and tourism in, into our area. It's a, an opportunity we can take advantage of that maybe we haven't as much as we could in the past.
Certainly. Great idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Sharon, is there, since the purchases, you know, Lee Health purchased that large parcel of land outside of, on Pine Island Road, next to where they already own a smaller pieces, have there been any ongoing discussions with them about future plans on what might be placed on at least the bigger parcel?
We are talking with Lee Health about that. They're in their master planning stage, what's going to occur on Pine Island Road, but I expect that we'll see some things happening. It'll be a couple of years out before they're revealing anything, but they, they recognize the need, and they're looking at that area and planning accordingly.
And is there anything more? I know you mentioned, there's some amazing things that are going to be happening in the Victory Park area with expansion. Is there anything you can share with us now beyond the hotel and what their plans are for this campus that they want to build?
So we're, I'm sorry, we're actually meeting with the developer and consultant sometime this month, and I think we still have to get it on the calendar, but he has reached out, and we'll be able to share more, give more information on the project, but we are going to be meeting with them shortly.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, two quick questions. I had, Mr. City Manager, I know you had mentioned the point nine percent as far as industrial space here within our city. It would be good to see the data as far as what that, those numbers between retail, office space, and industrial space is within the southwest region of, of our state, and also maybe the ten most populated cities, just so we have a comparison and a full understanding, maybe where we rank in those needs here in our city. So that would be some good and important information to have for the future, especially when we're talking about, you know, incentive packages that we're going to try to attract those types of businesses here. Additionally, the other question or comment that I had, Lee Health out on Pine Island Road as far as that project, can you give us an update on that? I didn't see that within the presentation.
So we actually, mayor and council members, I believe, within the next, I think, two to three weeks, we are scheduled to have a meeting with them at their health park facility to go over their, their status reports and their future plans for all of their facilities in the Cape. And as you know, they are currently embarking upon a hundred and fifty million dollar expansion in the Cape without even addressing the Pine Island Road corridor. So improvements at their existing facility on Del Prado, as well as expansions to their facility, I believe at, I think it's Skyline and Veterans, and also expansion in their outpatient services in the South Cape, which will take place as part of the Bimni Square Project. So they're very busy in the Cape, but again, we have a meeting scheduled, and I think Councilmember Shepherd has been invited to that one since, I know he's been in communication with, with them on their, their new campus project. So again, I think it's, it's within the next two to three weeks, but it's relatively soon.
Okay. And lastly, you know, I've always stated that I think Economic Development Department here in our city, probably one of the most important departments, because that's the future of our city. And having these updates, I think, is good. But the other thing that, you know, for me, what I would like to see, Mr. City Manager, is what we are going to be doing, you know, this calendar year as far as promoting our city. You know, I saw in your presentation what we've done, maybe in some advertisements or, you know, the initiative for, you know, we're open for business, but, you know, a good synopsis of how we are going to promote our city for this year. I think that would be good information to have so council can see exactly how we are going to promote our city for this calendar year. And that would probably be something I would like to see on a yearly basis, because I think that's very important economically for, for our community is, hey, how are we going to promote it? Make sure we have a good plan in place, because as we all know, a good plan usually will have great results. So I think that's what we're looking for.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate that comment and are on the same page with you. We actually talked about a marketing strategic plan for some of our efforts to get the word out and, and talk about Cape Coral. So what we can do now is anecdotally, in terms of our approach and, and what we want to see happening and taking steps with marketing, but I'm really looking to our Economic Development Master Plan and really getting some, some good information and a, a good baseline and, foundation to work off of, so that we're doing this strategically and wisely, and we know exactly what would be something that will contribute to where our opportunities are here, but certainly will continue to do that now. I just think that we can be more focused and strategic in how we do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions to ask you, especially when it comes to industrial space. We're at point nine percent. Understanding a city of our size should be thirty to forty percent in commercial, and we're at eight percent. We probably will not get to the thirty or forty percent. But the question I have to ask, one of the questions, is for industrial space of a city of our size, what should our percentage be? We're at point nine percent. I know some are probably, our size is like thirteen, fourteen percent. Am I off there?
So I don't know. It depends on the region in terms of, of the numbers, but I, I think if you're in the area of between three and five percent, that's more standard in terms of vacancy. But we've also seen that industrial has really taken off in the last few years. There's going to be a lot of onshoring that's happening, and so those spaces are being snapped up. Those numbers have. up. Those numbers have come down a lot and have stayed in the low range. So it is a demand that's there that we're working to try to meet.
And let me just remind council, and I think all of you know this, and so I'm preaching to the choir here when I make this statement, that one of the challenges that we have with respect to industrial development that other communities may not have is the fact that we're not immediately adjacent to an airport, although we have two airports within our region. They're still about 45 minutes to an hour away depending on what part of the city you're traveling from. We don't have rail infrastructure within the city limits and we're not in close proximity to a major interstate. And so when you look at, for example, all of the industrial development that is happening in the Illico Road corridor, I mean, that, that area of the county is exploding because that area has access actually to all three of those types of infrastructure, whereas we don't. And so you'll never see us get to the point where we are comparable with other jurisdictions because we just, we just don't have the transportation infrastructure. Now I'm hoping that over time with the expansion of and the widening of Burnt Store Road and the ease that now you'll be able to have certainly in the northwest part of the Cape in terms of accessing I-75, I'm hoping that in the near future that the MPO will prioritize the addition of a new intersection at I-75 to coincide with an extension of Del Prado Road, that that's also going to be helpful to industrial development in the city. But, but again, it'll, it'll never be what you're seeing in other parts of the county or other parts of the state given our, our challenges. And so I think what we're seeing is the industrial activity that we are seeing, a lot of it, but not all of it, a lot of it is focused to our own micro-region within, within the, within the county. And I think that's, that's our strength and we need to capitalize on that strength.
Sure, I understand. I just thinking of like distribution manufacturing, like Nortech, Ecological Laboratories, those are great ones to have. So in your marketing that you're doing, where are you reaching at? Are you just reaching here in Florida? Are you going out globally? Are you just going nationally? How is your reach and are you putting in kind of some of the importance of who we already have in our city that can maybe help bring them into our city?
So we have talked with some of our local industrial partners to get a good understanding of their supply chain and where there are some opportunities there. In terms of our reach though, based on some of the information we have, I think it makes sense for us to really hit the Midwest area hard. We see a lot of individuals that are relocating from the Chicago area here. And what I found in talking with the businesses that are here and some of the residents that have moved here, they've come and they've visited. They've come for, you know, just to stay and they have family here and they discover that they love the area and they'll have a business that also they're looking to grow or change things up. And so we get a lot of opportunity from that. Those are certainly some of our small scale, smaller businesses, but there's opportunities for growth with that as well. We certainly don't want to just focus our efforts on that. We do want to look at some of the smaller operations, but there's opportunity for growth from that and our attraction and being able to tell our story. There are some national site selection magazines that we've just placed some ads with that will be out there and Florida is really a hot area now, Miami specifically in terms of the economy, but we want to take advantage of that attention that's being brought to us, so.
If you don't mind me asking, what, what tools though are you using? How are you getting this outreach out there is my question?
So historically, what we have done, Councilmember, in the past is we work very closely with the Urban Land Institute, which actually has an international reach. We have advertised in their, their publication. We have showcased some of our, some of our successful businesses in that publication. As a matter of fact, the one that, that I remember vividly, maybe because we were just at Mercola last week, is, you know, we showcased Mercola as, as part of our Flowing with Possibilities campaign. That was advertised, I believe it was a half-page ad that we took out in ULI. We attend the ULI conferences. We attend the, I forget the name, it's the.
ICSC?
ICSC Shopping Center Conference, which they do here in Orlando. They do one in New York. We've attended both of those. The big one is in Las Vegas. We haven't attended that one, I think, in two years, mostly because of COVID. And NAOP, which is I think the National Association of Industrial Office, and I forget what the P stands for, P might be professionals, which is another international development related group that's out there. We haven't gone to that one, I think, in two years as well, mostly because of COVID. We will be attending those. And so we, and we also do advertising on a regional basis, certainly in the news press, The Breeze, there's the Southwest Florida Business Weekly that we also advertise regularly in. And so, you know, we're looking at all of those. And again, we work very closely with Lee County and we try to piggyback off of Lee County. And Lee County, you know, they are the primary entity for advertising the entire county as a region and they've been very helpful in sending us leads for a variety of projects that, that come their way. So that's a snapshot of what we've been doing, certainly opportunities to do more. One of the things that we have been talking about is again reinstituting our branding at our local airports and certainly with, you know, with the airport that's right around the corner, which is the Punta Gorda Airport. We, we want that airport to be known as Cape Coral's Airport because it's in our backyard. Not to say that RSW isn't, but I know we used to have a campaign where we were very visible in the terminals at both airports. That was, that campaign was discontinued, I think, right before I got here. And so we want to go ahead and reinvigorate that campaign so when people get off their flights at either airport, they are welcomed by some sort of a Cape Coral message in both terminals.
If I could just expand on that as well, I, I think it's important too to talk about moving forward, how the strategic plan is going to help with that. So I, we're responding now, we're kind of just putting ads in some of the spaces that we know are frequently looked at and in high circulation, but it's important for us to be database. It's important for us to, to know where our market is, where we want to push in terms of industries, talk about some of those numbers. There is a lot of valuable information that would feed into a more formal marketing plan and that is one of the things that we'll certainly be looking to do with our Economic Development Master Plan.
The question I have to ask, when you normally put your plan of action together and you send it out, do you ever give copies to council and the mayor so we can kind of see what everything's looking like and the outreach, where it's going, how you're communicating with people in this opportunity to be bringing in larger scale businesses here into Cape Coral?
No, Councilmember. What we have done, we haven't provided that level of detail to council members in the past. What we've been doing is summarizing our activities as part of the quarterly report.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think that kind of goes along a little bit with what I was kind of asking for is what our strategic plan is for economic development throughout the year. I think if we got a report, something similar to that, that may give council some insight on the direction that we are moving as far as promoting our city and economic development here. So that type of report is probably, if we would get something similar to that, that would at least keep us up to date on our endeavors, you know, as, as far as the future in our economic development opportunities. Councilmember Shepherd?
Do we seek out manufacturing? And what I mean by that is, you know, Nortech builds boats here and, and it's great for them because where are they at? They're, they're in an area where there's a lot of water, canals, things like that. So, I mean, I know what I would do. I would, I would be calling different manufacturing companies that manufacture things for water and boat activities and fishing and, and anything that relates to this area. Do we just ever reach out and say, would you like to, you know, relocate here or build another location here in Cape Coral and even invite them out? Do we aggressively work in that fashion or do we just advertise and wait for somebody to call us?
So there's a combination of both that we do. I would say that probably our approach is 80% advertising at this point. And one of the goals of our upcoming Economic Development Strategy refresh that Sharon mentioned is to once again, is to inventory the assets that we have here in the Cape. And Nortech is a great example. Ecological Laboratories is the next one. And certainly when we've met with them, we have talked to them about the need to identify what's called cluster development. And that is you build around the assets that you have in a community by attracting, as Sharon mentioned, the, the supply chain, the suppliers, right? And so that way, for example, I'm going to mention Nortech. Certainly during, during COVID, they had challenges getting engines shipped to their, their manufacturing facility. And so, you know, we need to work with Nortech and the engine manufacturers to get them to move closer to, to where the manufacturing is. Now in Nortech's case, I think they do a lot of business. I think it's with Mercury Engines if I'm not mistaken. I don't think Mercury is going to move their manufacturing to Cape Coral, but that's just an example of, again, identifying, first inventorying who we have and then inventorying what they have a consistent need for and then developing our strategy to target those clusters and in hopes of attracting them to the Cape or closer to the Cape. And it goes really beyond just Cape Coral, right? So we need to look at who else is in our region. And so, for example, if somebody's manufacturing something in North Fort Myers, maybe there's an opportunity for us, again, to, to attract as part of the cluster development scheme, you know, those suppliers that, that they need in Fort Myers. And so, you know, the last time we, we wrote, I think it started back in 2014, our Economic Development Plan that we have in place, you know, I think the document has served us well, but it's not very strategic in nature. It's, it's more of a recitement of, you know, what inventory is available. And, and so this plan that we, we will undertake this year is to be more forward-thinking in nature. And so that's, that's why we have it on our work, our work schedule to get accomplished this year.
Just to say one more thing, engines would be something major.
Yeah.
I'm looking at more smaller.
So yeah, you're right.
Like for instance, all the supplies and fishing gear and lures and, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
All these companies literally make their advertising videos here.
Yeah.
Right here. They come here to make their videos and marketing for their products.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And I.
These, you know, you might think maybe a fishing lure is not a big deal, but that's, that's more of a light duty manufacturing. It's not something like bringing an engine company here.
Yeah.
But, but like you said earlier, manufacturing that fits with our location, you know, what we offer.
Our, our strength, Council, is not in going after the big fish, right? Because of the, the limit, the challenges that we have, we're not going to land the big fish, but it's going after the small ones, right? The, you know, the 20 to 50, you know, employee type of firms. And so that's, that's where we need to continue to be at and that's what we hope to, to further refine. And I'll give you an example. One of the best kept secrets that's, that's out there, apparently Cape Coral is like the glitter supply hub of the United States. A lot of people don't know that, but there is a, there is a, a business that operates off of Pine Island Road in the southwest part of the city that is apparently one of the national leaders when it comes to supplying glitter. Know that. Nobody seems to know that, but that's a business that's in our backyard. They're very quiet. Nobody even knows and they're there and they do quite a bit of business and they have, you know, they've been expanding and they have, I forget what the number is, 15 to 20 full-time, full-time positions. And so there are, there are several examples of businesses like that in the Cape, whether they're producing coffee or they're making rum in our backyard, right? With Wicked Dolphin and there, there's a, there's a medical, medical equipment rehabilitation firm also in the Cape off of Pine Island Road that does, that very few people know is here and they do considerable amount of business. And so those are the kinds of businesses that we, we have to continue to, to target and, and actually help them flourish. They're not necessarily your, your micro-businesses or your startups. They're businesses now that, that have, they're in their adolescent stage, meaning that they're beyond the challenges of a startup. They're probably five years plus into their business. So that means that they're, they're no longer on shaky grounds, that they're, they're actually a viable business and now, you know, we have to continue to, to work with them so they can continue to grow, but as we, we just talked about, but also attract those ancillary businesses that they work with and get them closer to the Cape. I know I said a lot, but that's pretty much in a nutshell.
You don't? Councilmember Cummings.
Yes. As the mayor brought up the synopsis, in the synopsis that you guys put together, can you put the hows and the, and the wheres on how this is getting brought forth as well, which would be great? And then the other question I have to ask you, you claimed that you did some marketing materials in some of the magazines and some other areas, correct?
Yes.
Is there any way I can see some of the work you've done in the past?
Yes.
And then we can have a better look here to see how you're marketing? And you, and as of right now, you're saying the, you're just focusing only on the Midwest?
No. It's just one of the opportunities that we recognize. And again, I really want to be able to approach this with purpose. We know that from information that we've gotten, but we're looking for more information of where, where there's opportunities and where we should be targeting our efforts.
Okay. Have you been looking at who would be a good fit for us? Have you researched this to see who you could reach out to?
That's all a part of the, the master plan. What we want to do is understand where our strengths are, where there's opportunities in building on that and coming up with the data to, to make a case for why Cape Coral is a good place for your business. I, I really feel like we're on the path that council was saying, that you're looking for in terms of, of our approach and how we're doing it, why we're doing it. Those are all things that we recognize and I'll be pushing for a little shift in what's been done in the past.
When you're scaling it out, I think all of our goals up here is we're trying to find some companies to bring in higher paying job opportunities for the people here in Cape Coral. So I'm hoping you're, you're looking into that format for businesses to be brought into our city.
Absolutely.
With that being said, do you guys, are you also working on any incentives for those larger, maybe high-tech companies to come in?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you have, you, Council, you've adopted Cape Compete, which is our formal economic development strategy that lists, I think there are six different type of incentives currently with the facade and the ad valorem tax exemption. That'll bring us up to, I think, eight or nine different incentives that we offer and that is a considerable shift from where you were two years ago, which is where the council basically said you were, you were only going to. Council basically said you were only going to provide $200,000 a year, period. And now, Council has, I think back in, we started this in fiscal year 2022, Council provided, I think, a million five in seed money, plus you dedicated 100% of business tax receipts. And that goes into a special fund that's there only for the purpose of funding our economic and business development program. And so, you do everything from providing, you have monies available to provide support to small businesses in specific industries, to also providing pre-development assistance, site development assistance, and also a tax rebate program for large-scale developments. And so, that program is, the entire program is still relatively new. You have several developments that are in the pipeline that have expressed a desire to take advantage of those incentives. And as Sharon mentioned, your very first Cape Compete program will be coming to you, applicant, I should say, not program, but the applicant, will be coming to you on your January 25th agenda for approval. And that is the ABC Supply project that Sharon mentioned.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Would it be advantageous to take, like, say, the 300-acre parcel that we have on Burnstour Road? And I don't know how much of that would be maybe light industrial? And then put it out there that we have spots available? And then offer an incentive where we give them, you know, a pad location?
So, we have that, Councilmember, scheduled for discussion at your retreat next week. But just in general, we field phone calls and inquiries all the time from realtors and site selectors. In fact, we just had one last week from one inquiring about the 318 acres. We get a lot of inquiries. They haven't, especially for the 318 acres, other than one, with specific proposal, they haven't really gone beyond the inquiry stage, other than one for the 318. But we do get phone calls and emails all the time.
What I'm saying is like create a light-duty industrial park and say there is, we create 30 pads for 30 future businesses.
That's something that we're-
And then create that magnet of availability above and beyond going out there and hunting for these organizations, but letting them know, wow, here's a spot for you that's already unavailable.
That's something that, again, we'll discuss in greater detail with you next week because we need further guidance from Council. Because up until now, our operating plan for the 318 acres has been basically to advertise and let people know that the property is out there. We did receive one unsolicited proposal that was subsequently withdrawn. And so, I need additional guidance from Council to know exactly where this Council wants to head with that particular facility. And then we can go ahead and strategize a bit further on how we market that, the 318 acres.
Yeah, I believe what we're doing is good, but I believe also that we got to create the magnet. Thank you.
Yep. And so, next week, you need to tell me what that magnet, what you think that magnet should look like.
Any other questions or comments regarding economic development? Okay, seeing none, I think we will take a break until 11:45. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is facade improvement program conceptual overview. And I will turn that over to, I guess, our economic development manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So, first, let's just give an overview of exactly what a facade program consists of. So, it's based on providing incentives to encourage our property owners, and we'll be focusing on businesses, to make an investment into the appearance of their stores and enhancing the visuals and exterior of their storefronts. It's typically done through a normal, a range of incentives, grants, loans, or tax incentives. So, our purpose is to encourage that private investment to happen, to provide an overall improvement of the physical characteristics that we see. We're looking at targeted areas so there is a greater impact. And ultimately, what we'll hope to accomplish is that we're also improving property values. So, some of the economic benefits of a facade program are increased sales. There has- And then we have this building in Hamilton, New York. And here's an example of when you kind of look at on a broader scale of a facade renovation applied to a shopping center. So when we talk about the guidelines for the program, we are proposing to structure this as a grant that's a reimbursement at 50%. So that's a one-to-one match between the business owner and the city. As a part of this, though, we are looking to require the businesses to get some design assistance with the professional, so that there is a person and a professional with an eye for what would be pretty transformational in enhancing what's there. So the grants would be structured as forgivable loans, and that would be over a five-year period. So forgiven based on the amount of time that that business kind of meets some benchmarks in what we're looking to do. So if the business shut down operations in three years, then 60% of the grant is forgiven for the three years that he was there, but they're responsible for paying, he or she is responsible for paying, the remainder 40% of the grant. So as a part of this, we're also proposing that internally amongst staff that we have a design review committee that will look at the applications as they're being proposed, will be looking at that according to established guidelines. And so we're taking that from the land development code. I've worked pretty closely with Development Services and their planning team on how we can make sure that there's some content and some guidance to other businesses as they're making their improvements. So that committee would look at those established guidelines and make recommendations in the decision made on whether the project is good, we want to fund it, send it back and say it needs a little work, but certainly wanting to get different perspectives in a committee that would give some feedback on that. As part of this, we're also looking at a minimum of three improvements that have to be done with this project. So what we don't want to see is projects that are, again, really not impactful. We don't want 80% of our budget going to painting. We want this to be based on looking at a number of improvements in terms of categories. They have to choose three, three elements, so that we're getting a well-rounded approach to the improvements that are being made. And right now, what we're looking at is a 50% number, and this could change in terms of how much of that grant can go towards what's considered maintenance. So that would limit $25,000 of that being for what we consider to be maintenance-related. But again, that's a number that we are flexible with, but it appeared to be a good start for us when you consider the other measures that we have in place in terms of the minimum improvements that have to be made. Very often, there's going to be paint included. We just don't want that to be the only improvement. We want to make sure that there's some other scope of this, but we do want to provide assistance as long as we're accomplishing our ultimate goal. And so in terms of improvements, it's not limited to just these improvements, but some examples are entry doors, windows, lighting, shade canopy, signage, sidewalks, landscaping. And when we look at the parking lot improvements, just looking at that from the lens of accomplishing the objective of what we're wanting to do. And so for next steps, presentation today, we did present this to Cape Competes last week, and we got the endorsement of that advisory board. They're 100% behind the program as we're proposing it. The next steps would be stakeholder engagement. So we believe that the design professionals and the architects can really provide some valuable feedback. They're a pretty important component of this as we're looking for them to provide the design assistance, and we'll know if we're off the mark in terms of the number and the design assistance, and we'll also be looking for some additional things that maybe we didn't consider. And once we get that stakeholder engagement and we put together a fully flushed-out program and present it to you, assuming that today you give us the go-ahead to move forward with that, then we'll come back for city council approval, and it would be an amendment to our existing Cape Competes ordinance. In terms of the rollout, we are looking at this in two phases. So we want to focus on the downtown CRA first, just to kind of get it out for there to be some focused effort on what we're doing. We can see how things are impacting that targeted area, because we need to really get a good measure of how focused we need to be in order to accomplish the overall changes that we're wanting to do. And then after we start with phase one, we'll be looking at corridors that have had older buildings that need a little bit of love and attention, high-traffic areas. And so we've identified Del Prado, Pine Island, and Viscaia as three corridors that we want to look at for phase two. And so this is just a map that shows you the boundaries of the downtown CRA. And I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I guess first off, this was something similar to what I had mentioned in a CRA meeting last year. And I think it is a good incentive moving forward, especially when you're trying to do revitalization in a particular area. And I can tell you that I was involved in a similar type incentive program up north that was very successful when you were trying to revitalize a certain area. The program that I worked on up north was a program that if you did a certain percentage or a substantial improvement on a particular structure, that it was actually mandatory that you had to do a certain percentage of improvement on your facade area as well. And I think that sort of a program works well. And if that's a direction that we decide to go in, then I think you have to make sure you develop the criteria for that. But it was extremely successful, and what that did was make sure that a particular area is revitalized. I think starting out in our CRA area would be an excellent first phase to try to improve that area. For me personally, I kind of like it, very similar to what I just mentioned. If a substantial improvement is being completed at that particular business, then to make it mandatory, they have to do something on the outside as well. And once you make that type of a improvement mandatory, then you have, or at least can offer, an incentive program very similar to what you have mentioned here. You know, so one being, I think for me, you make it almost mandatory with a substantial improvement in order, or to set the threshold, if you're going to do an improvement and over a certain evaluation, then they have to do that improvement. Additionally, I guess my question is, I know for the CRA area, there are some funding mechanisms that are in place. They're not afforded to other opportunities throughout the city that you had mentioned. So I guess my first question would be, with this type of incentive program for the CRA area, are we going to utilize the funding mechanism for that particular area? Will that be coming out of the CRA budget, is I guess my first question.
I'll defer to city manager on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so if a project comes in within the CRA, the first funding source is going to be the CRA, if they have monies available. As you know, a lot of the CRA funds are already targeted towards reimbursing the city for a variety of outstanding debt that's out there, whether it's for the cove at 47th, 47th Terrace Streetscaping, and also the undergrounding of utilities. So that doesn't leave the CRA with a whole lot of money. I think they have about $1,003,000 sitting in an account to do property acquisition. But regardless, the first bucket we will go to will be the CRA. And then city, within the CRA, the city funding through Cape Competes would be secondary.
And have you identified this two-phase project as far as a timeline? You know, it sounds like we're going to see how it works in the CRA first. Are we going to, you know, is that going to be like a three-year pilot program?
No, I don't think it's going to be that long. I think it'll probably somewhere around six months, if that, to determine whether people actually want to use the program or not. I think we need to get one or two programs up and running first before we roll it out in the other areas of the city. And so one of the areas, I'm sorry, one of the areas that Sharon mentioned, and this is why we need to kind of feel the program out, because in certain cities, the city will provide all of the architectural services that are necessary. And in other cities, the city doesn't provide any architectural support. They require the property owner to go out and get an architect on their own. What we're proposing is an actual hybrid approach where we have an architect on retainer, so that if there is a business that either is uncomfortable, doesn't have the time to deal with an architect on their own, they can utilize the architect that we contract with. And conversely, if there's a business owner that has a relationship with their own architect, and they want to use their own architect in lieu of our architect, we want to provide that flexibility in our program as well. So we want to see how that works and whether that approach works for the Cape or some other approach. And so I think we need to get two or three of these projects off the ground. But most importantly is we got to get, one thing right now, all architects are busy. And so we don't even know if the local architectural firms have even capacity to be able to help us on this project.
The other concern that I have with this, or at least a point I wanted to point out, is you had mentioned in your presentation all costs associated, you know, with that project. My concern with that is, especially when you're talking about permitting and impact fees, giving an example, I know of some businesses here in the city that want to put a canopy up. And as a result of that canopy, there are impact fees that are associated with that, just with that minor alteration to the building. One thing that I would rather not see is those costs that you mentioned that are associated that possibly permitting and impact fees aren't included, only because then we can make sure that 50% of the, or up to $50,000 of that project is actually towards the construction cost. Because we all know you could put a simple canopy up, and if it increases the seating capacity, impact fees will be applied. And in some cases, I know the impact fees are in excess of $50,000. So that's a concern that I have personally on that particular incentive program. So I think what I would like to see moving forward, first off, I think it's a great program, but as everything else, the devils are in the details. So I think once staff develops the criteria for this program, I would like to see it back at a COW meeting first to have a follow-up discussion before it comes back in ordinance form, so council can weigh in on the criterias that staff has developed. So that would be something I would like to see moving forward. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited about this program. I think it's great for the city, and I'm glad to see some of the stipulations you've put forward, because we had a program like this similar in the CRA years ago. And seeing what you had written about painting and the amount of monies that can be used for that, that was part of the issue that we had with kind of the program sunsetting, was that the only people using the program were people just getting a grant to repaint their buildings. So I'm glad that we have that built in to this program that will limit the amount of money that can be used. So we're not just, you know, repainting an old building. We're actually using it to build it out. And I know there were a few buildings in the CRA that did it correctly and used the monies wisely, and those are on Cape World Parkway, and those buildings look a lot nicer than they did, you know, 10 years ago when this happened. So I'm glad to see this program come back, and I think that it's going to be good for the city. And especially, I don't want to hold it up, because in the CRA right now was one of the hardest hit by the hurricane. And there are plenty of buildings down there that could probably use a facelift, which is what this is going to do. And I think the sooner we get this available, the sooner the building and business owners down there are willing to rebuild after the hurricane. And if we can build back better, I think it's going to be good for the Southwest community. So I'm looking forward to this. And I mean, as a building owner down there, I'm already in the stages of doing this myself. So if this was something available for me, three months ago when I started, that would have been great. So I'm excited to get this going. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard.
I think this is a great program, but I don't want to make sure it doesn't get abused. And what I mean by that is, we have businesses that are only a few years old that have declined and got very trashy. And I believe that's our fault for not staying on top of it. And that's something we have to talk about later, of how we can improve policing our businesses in our city. There is a business at the front of the Super Walmart that closed down, and it is turning into a very horrible appearance. You know, they literally, just because their renter moved out, they stopped maintaining the landscaping. They stopped picking up trash. It just instantly goes into a deep decline. And you know that investor's doing fine because all those other pads are rented. We have the Golden Corral, which is empty now, that is going into deep decline. That hurts us as a city, that's our image. What I don't want to see is this program being used for when they get their new renter and say, oh, here's a resource, some free money. I don't want to see it being used in these situations, because I think these situations are our fault for not staying on top of these businesses, making sure they maintain their building, they do the upkeep and the maintenance, even if their renter moves out. And that seems to be prevalent around our city. And also, I want to bring up that I don't want, I see a lot of businesses maybe using the storm as an excuse for their upkeep and maintenance and even picking up trash. So that's something I want council to know, that we have to try to create some ways to police these businesses, because our appearance to our city hurts us in many ways, hurts us with new businesses wanting to come here. You know, it's our brand, it's our look, and we have to get on top of it. Like I said, the businesses that I've just pointed out to you, these are buildings that aren't even a few years old, that are already in a decline state. So I like this program, what it's meant for, you know, the older businesses that might need that fresh look. But I don't want to see... And also, I want to bring up that I don't, I see a lot of businesses maybe using the storm as an excuse for their upkeep and maintenance, and even picking up trash. So that's something I want council to know, that we have to try to create some ways to police these businesses, because our appearance to our city hurts us in many ways. Hurts us with new businesses wanting to come here. You know, it's our brand, it's our look, and we have to get on top of it. Like I said, the businesses that I've just pointed out to you, these are buildings that aren't even a few years old, that are already in a declined state. So I like this program, what it's meant for. You know, the older businesses that might need that fresh look. But I don't want to see property owners of other, of locations where they let it decline purposely, and then see this as a money grab.
So I, just to kind of build on what the mayor said in terms of the details being important, keeping in mind what you are talking about, this is more on the back end, so we can certainly look at how we address on the front end. But we talked about some of the triggers for when businesses have to repay back their grant. And one of them that we've identified is code enforcement. If they have allowed it to deteriorate and there's code enforcement actions, that's grounds for paying the grant back.
And to piggyback, since I don't see any other lights on, piggyback on what councilmember Shepherd mentioned, and I actually, this week in the meeting I had with our weekly meeting with the city manager, one of the topics that we had discussed is the appearance of our city. And we have to make sure, in my opinion, because I think the appearance of our city is extremely important, that you have to aggressively, you know, take a look at your approach on, you know, there's no reason to have an incentive program to try to incentivize a particular business to make an improvement on the facade of their building. If you have a building two streets over, like councilmember Shepherd had mentioned, that there's a minimum requirement as far as landscaping when it comes to the construction, commercial property within our city. And I know we had this discussion several years ago, and we actually, I think, had identified a code officer just for the commercial component, of making sure that these businesses keep up with that minimum requirement. A lot of times, you know, on the construction phase of the project and on the final inspection, we make sure that these businesses did exactly what they were supposed to do when it comes to their landscaping. But unfortunately, once we do that inspection, we almost forget about them. And we had this discussion a couple of years ago, and I think we had added a code officer just for the commercial component of doing these types of inspections, to make sure these businesses still are adhering to those minimum requirements. And as councilmember Shepherd had mentioned, you know, I think there are businesses out there that have not even pre- Ian, they weren't keeping up with their minimum requirements. So I think that's important, too. It's a multi-faceted approach. We have to make sure that the existing businesses are still doing what they're supposed to be doing. And also incentivize other businesses maybe on some facade improvements. So you just can't focus your efforts in one area. To me, it's a multi-faceted approach, you know. And I know myself and the city manager have a scheduled field trip for our city, I believe the first of March, or first of February. And that's one of the topics that I want to have a discussion with him. And like I mentioned to him just this week, was I had the opportunity to go down, you know, through Astero, Benita, City of Benita, and Naples this past weekend. And, you know, not that I'm looking to be in Naples, but when you look at all three of those particular villages, towns, or cities, they are light years ahead of us. And when you look at our budget, our budget is light years ahead of them. And I did some research a few years ago, two or three years ago, on what, because every city is different, every city has a different budget. But what I looked at, from St. Pete to Marco Island about three years ago, is a percentage of the budget that any given city is putting towards improvements, whether it's median improvements or some type of improvements within their city. And I can tell you, when I did that research three years ago, that the city of Cape Coral fell last. So a percentage at that time, now we've greatly improved that over the last couple of years, this council has and the previous council. But to me, that's how you have to look at the measurement. What type of percentage are they reinvesting in their city? So not only should the businesses do that, and that's what this program is for, but we as a city should do that as well. I always say that, you know, before you ask someone to do something, you have to do it yourself. So I think that's important moving forward, you know, when we look at these types of programs. That's all I have. Any other discussions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I just want to make a point. Not that I'm raining on the parade. There is one caution I want to share with council. And this caution is based on my discussions with people in the real estate industry. And one of the things that we talked about in terms of why we have not seen property owners reinvest in the appearance of their facilities, and namely, you know, commercial strip shopping centers and so forth. And the reason they told me is because they don't have an economic incentive to do that. And as Sharon gave you the quarterly economic development report earlier, I think she indicated to you that our retail vacancy is extremely low. It's like around 2%. And typically, what you find in other places of the country, you know, shopping centers go in and they do a facade renovation project to do what? To entice and attract new tenants. And they usually do that when they have vacancies. Because we have such a low vacancy rate, there's like no competition for a lot of these strip shopping centers. And so a lot of their tenants have no place to go. And so therefore, some of these, the owners of some of these strip shopping centers, they're at 100% vacancy. And so, you know, there's no economic incentive for them to plow more money back into the appearance of their facility, because they don't have to. And so I'm just sharing that with you, because I think that's one of the challenges that we have to deal with in terms of trying to convince a property owner who's at 100% vacancy, and, you know, they're comfortable with the way things are, to entice them to make that investment in their facility to modernize the appearance of their facility. And so we might get some pushback from folks, because they feel like, hey, I'm 100% occupied, there's no reason for me to spend that kind of money. So I just want to put that out there and let you know that that's one of the challenges that has been identified by Realtors in the Cape as far as being one of the possible pitfalls to the success of this program going forward.
Councilmember Shepherd.
You're exactly right. And we have owners that own strip centers that are fully leased out, and they've never skipped a beat, and they're cash cows. And they also decided that they want to make their profit even higher by not maintaining the exterior, by not picking up the trash, by letting their building decline to make even more money. What we have to do is we have to step up on our end and make that unacceptable in our community. If it's us voting on new ordinances and codes and regulations, then we have to do that. Because we have to set a level of expectation of what we want in our city and not accept that decline. So if there are things that you need council to do, if it's new ordinances or codes, please let us know. Because that's what I'm pointing out. That's why I mentioned literally buildings that are less than three or four years old, already in the state of decline, where the landlords are doing well. There's no reason for that, other than greed. But that hurts the community as a whole, and we have to protect the community. So if we have to up our standards of what's acceptable in Cape Coral, then we need to do that. And like the mayor said, we pointed this out about two years ago. And I see us failing. There hasn't been an improvement when it comes to the commercial policing. I think we're failing in that, and we need to step up and improve that somehow. So if there's something council needs to do to help you with that, please let us know. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that kind of goes back to what I had mentioned earlier. You know, with these lower percentage of vacancies, you know, most of the probably property owners are going, why do I have to put any money into it? Because if you don't want it, I've got five people in line that'll take it. But I think when I explained that previous program that I participated in up north with substantial improvement, and I don't know how you do that, I think one way of possibly doing that is looking at the assessed value of the property, and either doing a percentage, or if you're going to do an improvement in excess of what the assessed value, then you have to do a facade improvement. And that's the type of program that they had, is if you were doing a substantial improvement, and we would have to identify what that meaning is, then, you know, for argument's sake, you know, very similar, I know that the improvement that Backstreets did was well over a million dollars. Well, they did do some facade improvements, but just say they didn't want to, or any business. Well, if they walk through the door to get a permit, and that substantial improvement exceeds whatever threshold that maybe this council sets, then they have to do that facade improvement. And I think that's very important, to make sure that this program has a very similar type approach. That way, we know that we are doing an improvement in the city. Now, this is tax dollars that we are getting, that we're giving that particular business. Now, they can do what they want and not participate in this program. We have no control over that. So if they want to do a substantial improvement and not do their facade, they have that as a personal property rights, they have that opportunity to do that. But if we are going to give public tax dollars as an incentive, then we can set the rules of the game. And I think that's what we have to make sure that we do. Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, Mayor, and Councilman Shepherd. Just as residential, we have ordinance in place for a reason. It's to keep our community looking good. It should be the same way as our commercial property. I know that I want to keep my outdoors looking good, and I know you are, too, Councilman Walsh. It's important. It's a first impression when you walk up to a business. So giving that kind of incentive to keep them polished, I think is kind of, we can use that money towards new businesses. You know, these are the incentives I was talking about earlier. How can we bring in new commercial? We are under 8%. So the little commercial we do have, this should just be given. So I'm in agreement. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. As we're structuring this program, it's possible that we may need to give a special benefit to the CRA properties, or for the CRA. Because if you can get the same program if I'm on Del Prado from the city, but we say, well, we're going to look to the CRA to fund if you're on, in the CRA, then that's just substituting their pocket for ours. But maybe there will be a way that they'll be able to offer some special benefit or an added benefit for, that the CRA's funding could be used for to help attract some of that down to the CRA. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I would believe that many of these commercial building property owners are absentee. I would also believe that many of them are establishing triple net leases with their tenants. And as long as the rent keeps coming in to the landlord, the owner of the property may not feel any concern. So I think that, you know, what's important is that we, you know, certainly not just necessarily communicate with the business owner, but it has to go to the property owner. They may, through their lease, they may delegate the requirement of repair and maintenance to their tenant. But if the tenant is increasing their profitability by not maintaining, then they, and they're not hearing anything from their landlord, the owner of the property, we just have to make sure that we're communicating with the right person through this process, and setting the expectation with the right person. And while the, certainly while the property owner can delegate the responsibility of that to their tenant, they can't delegate the accountability for it to the city. So who we communicate with, and making sure that all of the parties understand the intent and the requirement, I think that's an important component of the whole program.
Thank you, Councilmember Shepherd.
The best way, one of the problems we're having is a lot of the businesses that I know I've complained about, code enforcement has one out, and then told them they need to clean up their act. And then they do, but then they don't do it again until code enforcement comes out again. We, I think we need to start penalizing these owners, even if they don't know what's going on, when it starts to hit their pocketbook, you know. Then they're going to pay more attention. And, you know, we have to set that precedence of what's acceptable and not acceptable in our community. And that's not happening. It seems they only, they'll only step up to the plate when we tell them, you know. And then, you know, and then we're wasting code enforcement money by sending code enforcement people out to these same businesses over and over again. Will you please clean your parking lot? Will you please maintain your exterior of the building? You know, and then they do it. That's not working. And that's why I think we need a new approach. And that's why I asked the city manager and staff if they have any better ideas. Because it's not happening. I mean, I drive around the city, and it just, it bothers me. And we have to nip it in the butt, because we're growing so rapidly. We don't need more of these degraded appearances happening more and more. You know, we need to set a precedence. We all know that when we go to other communities, and I'm not going to mention them, it's obviously not acceptable, because you don't see it. And that's what, that's the goal I want to achieve for our community. And what I don't want to see this money going towards is I don't want landlords applying for this money because they didn't feel like doing maintenance for 20 years. So they see this as, oh, here's how I can pay to fix up my place, you know, because I didn't feel like cleaning, or painting, or doing any maintenance. That, you know, I don't, you know, I don't see that as what this program's for. So I don't want to see it abused. But I think we need to, you know, like I said, we brought this up two years ago, and there hasn't been a change. So we got to find out why there hasn't been a change, and if we have to adopt something to put the fear out there, that, you know, what's acceptable and what's not, we need to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
And I can't agree more. And I think that was the point of my comment, is that if we're having to go out over and over again, and we're dealing with the tenant, the tenant's not doing it, and it may be their responsibility in their lease. And so since their landlord isn't holding them accountable, when we go out to hold them accountable, they're not in trouble with their landlord. So they just do it to appease. If the property owner knew of these repetitive, and maybe that's where the teeth gets put into it, is if you go out to the tenant for correction, and it's a repetitive event, maybe the next step is to go to the actual property owner. And if they want to charge back the tenant, that's fine. But at least the property owner then knows this person that I have a triple net lease with isn't holding up one of the pieces of that triple net.
Councilmembers, it stands right now, anytime we initiate an enforcement, a code enforcement action, I would say 99% of the time, it's initiated against the property owner and not the tenant. Unless we know definitively that the tenant is the one that is causing the violation. But typically, we cite the property owner and hold the property owner responsible.
Any other questions on this topic? I think we got a little off topic, but I think it all, you know, it's all part of the bigger picture. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, UEP North One West, follow-up. Mr. Klingon.
Thank you. Paul Klingon, Director Capital Improvements. Oh, there it is. All right, here's a quick outline of what we'll be discussing today. Coming back with you, we came to you in November, we've got updated numbers. Quick UEP history, the reason for the extension is for the water sewer irrigation. We do it in phases through special assessments. We all know the needs to eliminate wells and septic systems on less than a quarter acre lot, 10,000 square feet. Approves reliability and quality of service, environmental benefits, expands. Approves reliability and quality of service, environmental benefits, expands customer base. Assessments can be prepared pursuant to home rule ordinance. Water, again, wells running dry, concerns, Southwater Water and Management District may impose aquifer withdrawal restrictions in the future. Wastewater, eliminate onsite septic systems. FDP may impose onsite septic restrictions in the future. Irrigation reduces the dependence on fresh water. The majority of the construction of water sewer and irrigation has been paid through UEP assessments. Six, seven, North Two and North One was approved by council in 2012, and North One's a continuation of that. Next phase is the North One West UEP, adopting the same methodology as six, seven, and North Two. There's two components that we talk about a lot, is the line extension assessment or square footage, and the capital facility expansion charge. And assessments will be paid in full, or on the tax bill and installments. And the plan is to finance this project through bonds. All right, so the North One West project area, we're all familiar with that. We split North One West and North One East. North One West has six utility contracts, North One East five. We received the last two bids. So here's the bids we have now. And you can see contracts one and two are going to Denko Construction. Contract three is to Southwest Utilities. Contract four, Mitchell and Stark, and Guyman Construction got contracts five and six, total $203 million, ranging from $24 million to a high of $48 million. Here's the areas. Denko has contracts one and two, which are adjacent to each other. Suzie, or Southwest Utilities, has contract three. Mitchell and Stark has contract four. And Guyman has contracts five and six on each side of Diplomat. So actually, it worked out well that those that got two contracts are adjacent to each other, and I think that helps with the overall construction coordination, especially when we're dealing with a major road like Diplomat. All right, so here's the estimated construction cost. And you can see 42 million for water, 90 million for wastewater, 43 for irrigation. Storm drains about 10 million, road improvements 14, and fiber optics 3.9 for the total of 203. Here's the project costs, which includes all the soft costs and contingencies. So 175 is towards the utilities construction. 11 million is for one master pump station, and that's an estimate. And that is going out to bid, we're putting that out to bid after Jeff gets the CRA master pump station in, which we received one bid. So right now, that's estimated at about 11 million. And then storm drains, roads, and fiber optics is 28 million. Then we have the construction contingency, the proposed CNI services, that's an estimate of about 12 million. And then miscellaneous for design survey, UEP admin, that gets us up to the total of 249.6 million for the project. Now, these are the funding sources. So the 116 is towards the line extension assessment or the square footage. The 100.8 million is the CFC and utilities charges, and 6.2 under the transportation fund, 11.8 under the stormwater, and 4.5 is paid out of utilities, and that's for fiber optics. All right, again, getting into the assessments, same methodology as six and seven. We've talked about the line extension land area square footage for the EPs, and capital facility, capital facility expansion charge, CFC, is ERUs. So here's the, we, every time we, we updated these since the last time to get our EPs or the equivalent parcel, our 10,000 square feet, you can see the numbers for water, wastewater, and irrigation, and the total parcels that are in North One West. This just gives you an idea of where we are percentage-wise, and you can see approximately 98% is less than 1.9 EPs. All right, so here's the table that, with the new assessments for the square footage and the CFC, you can see the water sewer and irrigation, the total for the land area assessment is 26,617. Add that to the 6,750, we're at 33,367. Now, when we presented last time, when we had the estimates, we were at $35,044. So it has gone down $1,677. All right, so council did ask us to take a look at the other UEPs going back to Southwest One. And so we took that percentage of what the CFC and the assessments would be, based on the average home sale price. And this was the best data we had to go back to 2002. And you can see that the CFC, there's a little table, the CFC was 2,436, if I'm reading that right, for Southwest One, 3.2. Then it went up to 4,309 for Southwest Four. Now it's 6,750. So that, those numbers are included in the total, plus the square footage to get us the percentages. And you're looking roughly from a low of 6.3% in Southwest Two, to 8.3, which is, which is the highest percentage based on the sale price in North One West. We were also asked to take a look at more information specific to North One West. So we had the real estate division take a look at, on January 4th, the listings of homes. So there was 41 homes listed for sale, and you can see the min and the max, and the average of 427,000 in the North One West area. I also requested the last 120 days. And you can see that range, the average was 371 for that specific time. And this, and the sale price is 365 for those 28 homes, about 98.3%. So the table down at the bottom is just kind of a summary, is we took the 98.3% list price of the 427, for the four, it gives you the 419,000. That was 7.9% the assessment to the, the home price, or the sale of home price. We also took the, the 365, that, that lowest average for the last 120 days, that's 9.1%. And we took an average of the, of the two for the total 69 homes. So it gives you an idea of the specific area related to home sale price. We were also requested to take a look at past UEPs, and bring that forward to today's dollars. So we used the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. That's, that's what we use for heavy construction. And you can see from here that North One West is actually a little less than, in today's dollars, than Southwest Four and Five. And that's, it's more than a coincidence, those are also the two years, if you look back, that home prices were also at their highest, and, and possibly then construction costs in general. So I think this is a good comparison where the other UEPs landed, bringing the, the dollar to present worth. All right, so I'll turn it over now to Mark Mason, who'll discuss exemptions and funding.
Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. So let's go through the assessments. As we went through this last time around, just as a reminder, the city has to pay for its own properties, as well as county, state, federal-owned properties. So we pay the assessments from any legally available funds for these assessments. We also pick ups on some institutional properties, and we'll get into the percentage of exactly how much we do that with. But those are the, you know, any of the vacant institutional properties, churches, orphanages, nonprofits, any clubs, lodges, that sort of thing. These properties generally provide a service or a facility to their owners, occupants, and the general public. And so the city has made that decision to pick up a portion of the cost of those, and do to the public benefit that's been provided by them. And so we have a couple of options. One, we can make the annual contributions each fiscal year, or we can pay it all upfront for institutional properties. We generally do that on an annual basis. We budget for it, mainly because properties could change hands from institutional to something else. So we generally make those on an annual basis. So there are certain parcels that are also prohibited from the city code, from being, from connecting to, until other adjacent properties are served by potable water. And so the square foot assessment associated with those parcels, we advance that for those, for those parcels. And then we come around, and they, when we do a future connection, we will then recover those funds from those properties at, at that time, and assess them accordingly. So the North One assessments and exemptions, estimated, and so we want to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about as far as the properties for, and what we would end up paying. So we had a brief conversation about this last time around. Over the last, for Southwest Six, Seven, and for North Two, the city has been paying annually for the assessments, for any governmental properties, or the institutional properties, or even those irrigation prohibited connections, we have been doing those. So we, we're giving you, and there was a brief discussion the last time around, where there was some, an idea that we would pay upfront for these, as opposed to financing them over a period of time. But, so I wanted to give you a, a flavor for what that cost would be if we paid for them upfront, or if we were to pay for them over a period of time. So for the governmental properties, if we were to, you know, just pay, prepay the assessments, and I'll get into when the prepayment window opens up, and how long we would have to make that, the initial prepayment. We would pay $6.4 million, and generally, this comes out of the general fund, because that's the legally available funding, available for these types of properties. Or if we were to amortize it over the 30 years, which, the 30 years is the default method, I mean, we'd certainly choose something less than that, we would pay about $721,000 a year, or about $22,000 over a 30-year period. Institutional properties, we would just simply be making the $8,458 or amount per year, until the institutional property is paid during that, for the assessment. Or if it changes hands and it's something else, then we would change the assessment accordingly. Irrigation prohibited connections, at this point, we're looking at a total of $1,135. If we pay it over a period of time, it would be about 3,000, or $127,000 a year, or $3.8 million a year. And so we'll talk further, doesn't have to be made, that decision doesn't have to be made today, but we'll talk further about whether we want to pay off, pay these off or pay them off over a period of time. So the initial prepayment period would be from March 2023, when we would, and then through September 30th, 2023. The adjusted prepayment period would be for 10/1/2023 through 7/31/2024. The timing of the initial prepayment and the adjusted prepayment period really revolves around the timing of when we would issue debt in order to fund the, the program. At this point, we're looking at, at September of 2023. And so that's the timing of when we would look at the adjusted prepayment, which would include an interest component for the, for the term, because our first debt service payment wouldn't be until sometime in 2024. Amortized default method, we're looking at a billing, and we're giving property owners an option of whether they want to do it over 20, 25 years, or 30 years, with 30 years being the default option. And we would begin the first billing on the tax bills in November of 2024. So from an initial prepayment standpoint, for irrigation, I mean, for water sewer irrigation, these are estimated for, through 9/30/2023. Total amount to pay off would be $33,367. That's the number that, that Paul just gave you. You have the option to pay off any one, any three, any five, any six, you know, during that prepayment period, to bring down whatever the overall amount that you'd be paying annually during the course of that term, that you chose for the, for the payment over, for the assessments. For the adjusted prepayment amount, we would be looking at approximately $35,009.1, or any one of these during the course of that year. This includes the amortized, or the, sorry, not the amortized, the, the cost of interest during the period of time from September 30th until we put it on the tax bill the following year. And that's spread out through all the same parcels. And so if they, anybody chooses to make an adjusted prepayment during that period of time, it would be any one of these particular amounts. So when you're looking at the Northwest One financing, for the maximum annual payments for 20-year terms, we would be looking at a total of $4,365 per year for 20 years. So that's, now, before you, anybody pulls out calculators to, you know, to calculate up the, the, the assessment amount, as you'll recall, the last time, I said I'd bring back something to kind of give you an idea of what these look like, okay? And how we amortize them. This is the 20-year one, so what I have is an example of the 30-year. So as soon as I get to the 30-year, I'll show you what that looks like. For 25-year term, it would be $3,991 per year, or any of these amounts singularly. And then for the 30-year term, which is the default term, it would be $3,740. When we originally talked to you the last time around, we were looking at the default term being 20 years. However, that's, it's actually the higher amount, and from a debt issue and standpoint, either 20 years or 30 years, doesn't really make any difference, the, we're looking at 30 years would be the default, unless somebody chooses a shorter term. So to get, give an idea of what the debt looks like, I brought a loan schedule just for one of the assessments, for, I think it's the water assessment. And so up here, I, these are small numbers, and I'm sorry about that. Let's see if I can kind of get it a little bit, sorry, a little bit closer here, just kind of look at some of the numbers up top. There's multiple items that are included in the, in the calculation for the annual One of the things that we do from a, from a principal payment, or a principal installment standpoint, it's the exact same amount per year for the term. And so you take the total assessment, you divide it by the 30 years, and this is the amount that you would end up paying for the principal assessment. The primary reason associated with that is that it, the debt theoretically can get paid off first, but the installment is still on the property for the remainder of the term until it's paid. And so if you were to make adjustments to the principal installment, so it would be a lesser amount, people that are on the assessment would end up paying a, a, a lower amount than what the total assessment is. And so folks that have already prepaid, the ones that are on the assessment could theoretically pay less than what the, the amounts that were prepaid by the original, from the original assessment. So on a principal amount, we would just simply divide it by 30, or 25, or 20, and it's the exact same amount every single year. On the interest component, the interest component in the calculation here is just to give you an idea, or what the interest would be at 6.5% for the 30-year term, based upon the principal payment down, the down payment of the principal, or the pay-down of the principal over that period of time. For an assessment, we also have other things that are included in the overall assessment. That's the admin collection cost and the statutory discount recovery. And the admin and collection costs, this is the amount that is charged by the tax collector for the cost of, that, for them to collect the assessments on our behalf. And the statutory discount is 4%. And for those that, you know, may have a mortgage, they're going to, every year, they take advantage of the 4%, so we need to be able to recover the full cost of the assessment without the discount. And so that's the reason why the installment is usually a little bit higher than if you actually tried to calculate this on a standard mortgage calculator. It's not going to come out the exact same way. At the same time, this is, just gives you an idea of what a, again, these, well, these numbers are probably a little bit bigger, but this is what a, a, a standard bond issue schedule tends to look like. schedule tends to look like. Bonds are issued in $5,000 increments, and we schedule these up, so we tend to try to have, it, it's not going to be the exact same debt service payment every single year, but it's going to be very close. And so the bonds are sold on a coupon rate, but they're, it's the yield that is the most important thing to the bond buyer. And so the longer the term, the higher the yield, the long, the shorter the term, the lower the yield, even though the coupon may be close to the same number, it's really, it's really about the yield that's, that's being calculated, the interest that you're going to end up receiving for the, for the amount of time that it's out there. And so from a principal standpoint, generally speaking, you're going to have a very low principal upfront, you're going to have higher principal towards the end that's being paid off. Again, it's about the yield that you're going to be receiving on the interest for the term that you're holding it. And the interest is actually much higher in the beginning and much lower at the end. But for us, in the assessment, we have to be able to make the debt payment that you see up there annually. And so when we're actually doing the assessments, even though it's 1/30 of the principal amount, we're also charging off the cost of the interest in order to ensure that we recover the interest and be able to make the debt service payment annually. Probably a little more complicated than we, I wanted to make it today, but it's, I do believe that it's important to understand how these things are paid and how we finance them over, over the term. And so to give you an example of the maximum annual payments comparison for all the assessments, there are six assessments, just to make sure we understand that there are six different assessments. You have the, the water, the sewer, and the irrigation, and then you have the, the capital facility expansion charges, which is the capital facility assessments that are also included here. And so looking at the 20-year amount, it's, again, it's 4365. 30-year amount is 3740. Difference between the two is about $600. For financing, we also offer up a hardship program. This is a method for property owners who will likely have a, a difficult time making this, this payment due to a variety of reasons. The method of deferral is usually on the, the annual payments, and it's applicable only to the amortized method only. In other words, we don't do a hard sharp deferral for somebody who is looking to prepay. So it's, you know, once, if you don't prepay, it goes into the, the adjusted prepayment, and then after that, it's automatically defaults to the amortized method. Based upon income qualification, we utilize the same qualifications generally that CDBG uses for making a determination of whether they qualify for this particular deferral program. And they must qualify annually. In other words, very little different than what we, what the property appraiser does with the, with, with your exemptions. You know, you go, you apply every single year, sometimes they just turn over automatically. But with these, they need to qualify annually. They provide us the documentation to support their, the hardship, and then we either apply it, or we don't apply it. Community development block grant is also available. This is mostly the connect from the meter to the home. We do offer this program as soon as we put an assessment in place, and we're getting ready to the point where we're, that folks are available to be able to connect to the system. In other words, the system's been energized for, for connections, then we roll out the program for CDBG, for low-income families to be able to connect their meter to the home, septic abandonment fee and the water meter fees. Again, the household must be income qualified, they must, they must own the property or the owner occupied. They also must be homesteaded, and the, they must be current with their mortgage payments in order to be able to qualify. And again, this is a CDBG program, so it's going to be for the very low-income families. All right, so the next steps. This is, this is where the rubber meets the road for us today. The, right now, we are planning on bringing forward the initial assessments on February 1st. So that would be two weeks from today. We're looking at February, I'm sorry, not February, March. March 8th would be the homeowners informational meeting, and then the final assessment hearings would be held on March 22nd. The primary reason associated with this is that all these contracts that Paul gave you the information for earlier must be in place and adopted prior to April 1st. That's the six-month timeline for all of these contracts to be good for. Anything beyond that, we'd have to start all over again and do something different. So the, so from a timeline standpoint, we're looking at bringing these to the initial assessment resolutions on February 1st. We would do the homeowners informational meeting on March 8th, be here in city, in the, in city hall and council chambers. I believe it's, the timing, I think, is from 6:00 to 8:00. But that information will go out as part of packages that we generally mail to all the property owners once we've adopted the final, the, the initial assessments. And then, again, we would do the final assessment hearing on March 22nd, and we would notify, and I think we would either approve all the contracts on March 22nd as well, and then we're, we would move on from there. So we're here for any questions.
Councilmember Hayden.
Mark, as I had said earlier, this amount, because it's much, the assessment amount is much higher than what other assessments have been in the past, is going to shock a lot of people. You know, we understand because of construction costs and other reasons that where it puts the assessment amounts now. I know we're doing the informational session on the 8th. That's great. But I hope we're preparing other forms of information to let people know even before that what they're about to face.
We sent out notices a year ago advising people that we were moving forward with the assessment. So that, this won't be the first time anybody has heard of it, but the-
Did that notice include what the amount might be?
No, it does not. It just lets them know something is coming.
There's a huge difference between that and possibly surprising them with an amount within a few weeks of when we'll adopt it, okay? I'm just saying, be prepared for what we're going to face. And I'm not sure Chambers is going to be big enough for that particular meeting based on the history of how other folks have reacted to this assessment amounts. Can you, is there a way for you, and I think you said this the last time I referred, I meant my memory, what is the percentage of people that typically prepay during any assessment period?
I want to say it's usually around 10%, but it's, it's different from every assessment area, so, yeah.
And if that information is available to provide to council, I'd kind of like to see a breakdown of prepayment amounts. How many, have we always been 20, 25, and 30 years?
No, no, this is the first time.
For 30 years?
For the assessments, for 25 and 30. Normally, it's been 20 years, and that's it. 20 years and done. We were recognizing that dollar values here were likely to be a bit higher than what they've been in the past. And, you know, and, and frankly, what you have right today is that you have other assessments that are out there for 30 years. I mean, you have the solar assessments for PACE, and you have the window assessments for, you know, for 30 years. And even though their interest rates are a little bit higher than ours, it's, you know, it certainly seemed reasonable to offer this amount and these terms to property owners that are willing to take them.
Yeah, people take it out to 30. The, the total amount that you'll pay over that time exceeds six figures, correct? If you apply the interest?
Correct.
Okay.
And it, again, it, you know, the, anybody can pay off anytime, you know, but it's there, and the numbers are, are accurate, yes.
I just want us to be fully prepared, you know. We need to move forward with this, with the program. It isn't my point. My point is being prepared for what we're going to face over the next several, several months because of the costs of this thing. There was also a question circulating that the capital facilities expansion charge of $6,750 needed to be paid over a six-year period. Is that true?
No, that was previous in North One, like, sorry, North Two and, and Southwest Six Seven.
Okay.
That was the case, and that was the, the situation for those two assessment areas.
Okay.
This one, we're looking at extending it to the exact same term as the assessment.
Okay. And that, and just so everyone's clear, that $33,367 amount does not include the amount that a homeowner would pay to get it hooked up to their house, correct?
It does not.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I'll just mention very quickly, I'm glad to see that we're doing the 30-year assessment. I think that's going to help a little bit. But one thing that I would suggest possibly doing, you know, and we, we may not want to start this now, but unfortunately, I think we should. We, we need, in my opinion, we shouldn't wait until our homeowners meeting in March. You know, we know the number now, we know it's coming. As much as I know that we will be inundated with phone calls and emails, I think we need to try to get this information out. We've identified exactly where these parcels are. I think we, as a city, should be sending them a notice, giving them exactly what that number's going to be, and also giving them the information that we will be holding meetings in, in March.
They receive a very thick package in the mail that will go to the printer tomorrow, and then will be mailed as soon as the council approves the assessment resolutions on February 1st. So they'll be in the mail. So that, everybody will get them likely in the first two weeks of February, if not earlier.
That's good to know, because, you know, I think that's important, because there's going to be some individuals that may be on a fixed income. You know, when you look at some of these households, we're going to assess $3,700 a year. Their taxes are earning $2,500 a year. So it's going to be catastrophic for some people. And, you know, they, they're going to have to plan accordingly. They may have to move. So I think giving them that information as quickly as possible so they can plan accordingly is extremely important. And I think we have a obligation to make sure we give them that information as quick as possible. So it's going to occur within the first two weeks of February. I'm okay with that, once it's approved. But, you know, some of these people will have to plan accordingly. If they're on a fixed income, I, I can see them putting their house up for sale. I know we've seen that in the past with UEP projects, because they can move into another part of the city that may not have a UEP project coming for 10, 15, 20 years. So we, you know, I, I just think we have an obligation to notify them as quick as possible. Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. And, and Mark, I, I, one comment and two questions. First comment is, thank you very much for the, for the detail and, and looking at things that I had a concern about. And it makes it a lot easier to explain with the level of detail that you provided us with, because as council members, we're going to receive a lot of the communication. I think, the one piece of detail that I think is so critical, and I think it is extremely helpful in understanding it and being able to explain it, is your slide 21, where, where you deal with the indexed values and putting things in perspective in that way, and, and the exact correlation between rising property values and then a decline in property values that we all know happened, you know, after 2007, and then as property values have increased again, you know, those increases and decreases certainly have a lot to do with building material costs, labor costs. And, and so this year, that page proves that this year is not an anomaly, but simply the nature of the beast as values and costs of doing business move. So thank you for, for the detail and for going to that extent to, to put things in relative form. A couple of questions that I had was, I had heard somewhere along the way toward the end of last year, beginning of this year, that, that there were some new, if you will, state appropriations for infrastructure that were going to be available. And I had heard comments that, that those appropriations and the application for those appropriations might be able to be used to, to, you know, cut down some of the overall cost of this, that we could apply for those dollars and apply into this project. True, false, misguided? Do you know anything about that?
No, I don't. It, it doesn't mean I can't look into it, but the, if, if you're talking, when you're talking about last year to this year, you're talking '22 to '23, right?
Yes.
The only reason why I ask that is because the only thing that's occurred is SB4, which we'll be talking a little bit more about next Friday. But SB4, it did, they did put aside money for specific things, but it mostly has to do with recovery.
Okay. There was something that was coming in somewhere in the tune of about $400 million, I want to say, and it may, and we may be talking about the, the same thing there, and that-
I think we may be talking about the same thing, but other than that, no, I don't know of anything else that might be available, other than the other grants that we've already looked at, that, and, and the grants that we've already applied for. In many cases, the grants that we've applied for are more on the irrigation side. And, you know, the, so we take advantage of what's available to us when it comes to those. Any federal grants are off the table for us because we didn't bid these, these projects with any of the federal language associated with, with the, with, with federal grants. So there's no federal grants that we're going to be able to apply for, for this.
Okay, thank you. And, and the second is, is there any benefit to our citizens in the amount of money that they're going to be responsible for with our decision of whether to pay our costs for our properties that we're responsible for upfront, rather than financing them?
But in, in, in this particular circumstance, you know, it's long-term infrastructure. It, you know, it's, it's certainly, if you pay it all upfront, I'm not going to earn 6.5% on that money. So paying it upfront generally would make sense for us. It's, it's an expense that we don't have to budget for every year thereafter. But at the same time, you know, if, the resources are not available to us to pay for it upfront, in the past, they stopped doing it, I think, for Six and Seven and North Two. The Five, Six assessments prior to that, we would budget for it annually and pay for it. When I say annually, we would pay, we would budget for the, the payoff amount and, and then pay it. We would, we would not keep the, this assessment going every single year and paying for it every single year.
So-
So the benefit to the residents is, is that if it's paid off, you know, you don't have that added interest, interest expense for everybody to have to pay for this assessment.
So we would, we would issue municipal bonds for our portion, just like we would for citizens' portions, and, and we would repay just like citizens would?
No, the, we, in effect, we aggregate all of the government properties, and we calculate as, as, give you an idea. We looked at all the government parcels at $6,471,362. That's all of the government parcels, everything that's assessed for our properties. We're responsible for paying, for all governmental properties. The federal government isn't going to pay the assessment, the county's not going to pay the assessment, the state's not going to pay the assessment. We pay the assessment, and it's included in our assessment resolutions. Be that as it may, we have the opportunity to either pay it off upfront in order to avoid any interest costs that you'd be paying over a period of time. In other words, and, or we could finance it over the same term. The financing is the same as the resident who lives up there. We're going to pay the exact same assessment annually, depending on if we chose 20, 25 year, or 30 years. You know, I mean, I would go with, if we did that, I'd go with the shorter term. But, you know, it, but at the same time, we pay the exact same assessment as a, a property owner in North One West.
So just, just to make it simple, whether we choose 20, 25, or 30 years, or pay it upfront for city-owned properties, has no effect on the annual assessment that's applied to a citizen's property?
Correct. No effect whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. Is there any programs set in place for the families that are dealing with hardship? Because I've had a few people reach out to me and saying, I just can't afford this, I'm barely making it as it is, with the inflation happening, with the economy- afford this, I'm barely making it as it is, with the inflation happening, with the economy, and they, and the second question with that is, was, what will happen to them if they don't pay for this?
Okay, so if they don't pay, and it's on the annual, it's on the annual tax bill, then it becomes subject to a tax lien, tax lien will be sold annually until, usually for three years, and then it's banked, and if they're never paid off, then the property will be, will be foreclosed on and auctioned off, that is the, that is the process associated with tax liens.
So do you have a program set aside for the families that are having hardship at this time?
I, and, and on page thirty-four, the, of the, of the presentation, if this, if they'll bring it back up, we have a hardship program, and it's included in the information package that we provide, that will be mailed out week after next, and the method of deferral of the annual payments, it, it, in effect, it's applicable to the assessments as a whole, it's based upon income qualification, and they have to apply annually, and so, generally speaking, we utilize the same rules that the CDBG uses, so we're looking at low-income, very low-income families with respect to the hardship program that the city provides, so on hardship program, when they, you know, if we approve the hardship program, in effect, or the, it, for anybody who applies for the hardship, the city pays the difference, we pay it, until such time as they're able to pay it, or they, we have, there's a lien on the property for the remainder of the time, and if they sell the property, the, the liens are paid off, at some point in time, they get paid.
Okay, and then the other question I had to ask, the realtors that are selling the homes out in this area, are they letting these new homeowners aware of the UEP program? Are they aware, 'cause I got word, someone said they bought a house, and they didn't know anything about this, and they were very upset.
I, I would certainly hope that the realtors are in fact doing that, since last year, the, with, when Councilmember Tate was on board on the council, she had asked us to send out notices to all the property owners, we sent out notices to the property owners, she advised the Realtors Association of the upcoming assessments, and so if the realtor doesn't advise the property owner of the assessment, there's absolutely nothing the city can do about that, but they are certainly aware of it, to the best of my knowledge.
With all due respect, that was a couple of years ago, and this is kinda happening now, is there any possible way we can kinda, you know, put something out there to all the realtors, you know, Councilman Stanky, I don't know if there's something that can be done, because it's kinda moving forward now pretty quick, and a lot of people are new here, that weren't here a couple of years ago, that know about this, so-
So the answer to your question, Councilmembers, yes, we can absolutely do a targeted information piece, once again, to realtors and to also contractors, as we have done in the past, we notify contractors ahead of time, so when they start building their homes, they can take into account the fact that UEP is coming, and they can plan accordingly, in terms of where they put a future connection to the house, and whether they should proceed or not with construction at all, 'cause some, sometimes the, either the contractor or the property owner will simply just decide to wait, rather than to incur the expense of putting in a septic tank, a water treatment system, only to turn around within a few months to have to connect to a city water and sewer system.
There's an affidavit that they're required to sign for these permits downstairs, so it, it, at the, in the building department, so they, when they apply for a property that's in a future assessment area, they're required to sign an affidavit, understanding that, as the city manager just pointed out, we're coming with the assessment, so if you wanna build it, and, you know, just know that there's going to be a potential assessment on the property in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
George?
Two things, just to contribute to Councilor Cummings' question or remarks, one is, based on my relationship inside of the Realtor world, once February second happens, and it's engraved in stone, I will see that a communication goes out to all Realtors in our area, through their Realtor communications, as well as whatever the city chooses to do. Secondly, whenever a property is sold, there is a seller's disclosure that is supplyable to a buyer, and one of the questions are, are there any assessments, future assessments currently known on this property, so, so the seller is obligated to notify a buyer if there is any assessment that is on the books and coming, they don't have to unless it's already-
Adopted.
Adopted, so that's why, as soon as it is officially adopted, we'll make sure that that information gets out, and that people are properly edified about it.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor, Mark, those packets that you said are gonna go out to the residents, you said February, right?
Yes, they're, they're supposed to go to the printer tomorrow, and we'll, looking to get them out, I think, in the first, first week or so of February.
It's probably too late for me to ask this then, but I know the last UEP, the documentation that went out was kinda confusing, and illegalies, and not very user-friendly, is this going to be any different, do we have communications help?
No, we're required, literally, we're required by law to, to ensure that there is nothing that's missing, and so-
But we can always add something on top that says, here's everything in plain English.
I'm hoping it's in plain English, it's going to look just like the last ones that went out.
That's disappointing, 'cause I remember bringing this up, although it was a different city manager, I remember bringing it up after North Two, to change the way that we communicate about it, but if it's going to print tomorrow, there's nothing that can be done?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We, you know, we, we'll certainly give a shot to look at something that, it makes it a little easier, but, at, at this point, it, it needs to go to the printer tomorrow to be able to get it out in a timely manner, in advance of the, of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard?
In the packet that we are sending out to all the people that are gonna be impacted, do we, I think it would be a good idea, and I don't know if we're already doing this, is to have a, maybe a little, try to have a softer approach, and what I mean by that is, have a page in there that gives a little background and history of what we're up against, you know, like talking about, you know, how people's wells are going dry, because like, I, I've been in this room with Pats UEPs, and you get people screaming, you know, I have a well that works perfect, I have a septic system that works perfect, so I'm happy with what I have, but if, if we educate them with, you know, the requirements of our city to get so many houses off septic, you know, we have an obligation to do that, the safety of our water, and, and how the wells are going dry, and, and just, you know, just, just adding that, you know, just letting, giving them a little background and knowledge of why, like, we're not just out to give you, you a bill, we don't just wanna add you on our system, these are things that are being mandated by the state, and our city has to move forward, and, you know, we have to rid of, you know, septic systems, and, you know, we have to bring you clean water, and make sure that you always have water, because your well might go dry, and will go dry, things like that, and then the other thing, the other point I would like to make, that I think has been touched on, is with technology today, maybe our communication department, this would help with a vast of things, is, I'm sure there's a way of knowing with technology, of every time a, a house is purchased, and maybe the city having a welcome-to-our-city type of mailer, that goes to all new home sales, that just educates someone a vast of things, you know, anything from, you know, how to put out your trash, to, hey, by the way, your, your UEP's coming in two years, or, just a little, you know, hello, welcome to the, welcome to our city, here, here's some resources to get information, because we, we are a very transit city, and we get a lot of people, like, it's already been brought up, that just moved here six months ago, or a year ago, or a month ago, and I think that kind of letter of welcome to the community, and here's some, some hot items that you might wanna know about, you know, I get people moving in my neighborhood and say, oh my God, I, I can't believe I'm not, I have a boat in my driveway, it's a boating community, but if we have that introduction, that hello, that may be something that our communications department can work on, that would save us a lot of headache in the future, and that's how I see this letter, that maybe we can add in with the informational packet, when this room fills up, I mean, I've watched it over the years, just like some of our other council people, the same things come out of everybody's mouth, you know, I have a well that works perfect, I have a septic system that works perfect, a lot of people just think we're, the city's just out to give them a bill, so I, I think if we added some kind of informational history letter of the why, you know, the why this is being done, it's, you know, I think that helps with some people, but not all, thank you.
So I think, Councilmember, the answer is yes, we can do that, if it means that we'll have to do multiple mailings, and, then that's what we'll do.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor, I was gonna touch on the same thing, the more knowledge we have to pass along to the residents, the better, you know, wells are gonna go dry, the more sticks you put in the ground, you know, it's not gonna be mandated by us to connect these people, the state's gonna come in and say, we have to do this, so, any information you can give us to pass along to the residents as this comes forward, is gonna be great, so, that's what I was gonna ask for, the same thing, just some tools for us to hand out, the reason why, why the state's doing this, obviously, the underwater aquifers are running dry, we dig so deep, they dig so deep, so just things like that, tools for us to educate the public, and also for the city to have, for when, when you get the phone calls and the emails, to educate the public as to why we're doing this, would be great to have, so, thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
I guess I'll address this to our communication team, at least for our homepage on our website, is there a way to put a button up there now, that addresses some of the questions that have been asked up here, that people can go to and see, kinda get a preview of what's ahead?
The answer to that is yes.
Okay.
We will work on that.
Alright, thanks.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you, I've used, in, in many cases where people ask questions about UEP, I've used the, our website, and currently, if you go to capecoral.net, and just in the search area, type in UEP, you get a tremendous amount of information, and so to produce that type of informational letter, like we're talking about, the why, maybe you've given a diagram, you know, so, you know, pictures worth a thousand words, showing the number of straws going into a, into a, you know, a common aquifer, and that we can only have so many straws, and we were going past that, just so that people have a better understanding, and maybe a visualization of the whys, I think would help them, and we've already got that spot there on the website, you know, we, you know, potentially have, have an addition to that area, and all of us have a link that we can send people to, you know, when we, when we get our emails, when we get our letters, when we get our phone calls, hey, go to the website, go to this, you go to this area, you know, type in, you know, whatever we choose, that, I think it's a great place, we've already got, we already got the, the system, we just need to know where to direct the people to, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mason.
Thank you.
I do have one comment for, for Mr. Klingon, you know, one of the things that we learned in our previous UEP, or a problem that we had, was, and I know some, as you had identified, I think we have five or six different contractors for this UEP project, and of course, many of those contractors have subcontractors, one of the major complaints that we had gotten in our last UEP project, that I'm, I just wanna make sure that we've come up with a scenario or a solution, so that we, we don't repeat ourselves, is, you know, we had subcontractors that their sole project was just to remove the existing roadway, and then after that, we had a subsequent subcontractor that would come in, and either do, either the piping, or the stormwater management, or whatever, one thing that I wanna make sure that we do a better job at this time, because this was a major complaint before, was, we have to make sure that that timeline, from the time that the, their streets were removed, to the next phase of the project, that that timeline is much shorter this time, because what we had last time, is we'd have a contractor would go up, go in and tear out a road, and we wouldn't see anything happen for a period of six to eight months after that, and unfortunately, then the residents had to experience that, especially during rainy season, they're driving in the dirt, so hopefully, we've learned from that, and we've, we've identified some, some course of action, where maybe the city has to approve before the contractor goes in and removes the roadway, knowing when that second step is gonna occur.
The answer to your question is yes, we've incorporated checks and balances in this contract, just for that, 'cause our biggest complaints are either mud or dust, so, yes, as long as there's pavement down, we seem to, the complaints seem to drop off, so we do have those checks and balances, and that, more attention to detail on that.
Okay, I appreciate that, Councilmember Cummings?
Yes, Rob, on, you were saying that you, you could do the history, maybe on the second letter that would go out, hitting base on what Councilwoman Cosden had spoke on, I'm in agreement with her, make it more simple, in the beginning, of course, you gotta have all the bylaws and everything on the next page, Mr. Mason, but I agree with her, it can get very complicated, a lot of people don't understand the legalities and the terms, so if you could just do on the second round that you're doing, just breaking it down to simplify it, that would be awesome, thank you.
Do, do we have performance penalties too, as well, if a contractor isn't keeping up?
Typically, in our contracts, we do have liquidated damages.
Okay, any other discussion on this topic? Seeing none, item five, is any roundtable discussions, none listed, council have any roundtable discussions, Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, at our last meeting, I had brought up wanting to have a little bit more discussion on moving citizens' input to the end of our meetings, because of the fact that they start at four-thirty, and a lot of residents work till five o'clock, so I don't know if I need a second to start working on this, or if you guys have any interest in changing the way we conduct our meetings, I do know that, since I made that comment, I received an email from a resident that was very glad to hear me bring it up, because they were not able to attend, and actually had to talk to a, a neighbor of theirs to possibly show up and, and bring forth their comments, so, I, I, I think this is the time to bring that up, I don't know if I need a second, or if we wanna talk a little bit about.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is have a consensus of moving forward, and I think we can just go, either open the discussion, and then we'll go down the line to see if that is a desire to this, for council, I know typically, the mayor sets the agenda for the meetings and approves it, if that's the will of the council, I'm okay with it, for me personally, I don't agree with it, I think we keep it where it is, because if, in my opinion, there's many items, and I think I had mentioned this, when you had brought it up before, there are some items that we really don't even discuss, like the consent agenda, so if we put the citizens' input to the rear of the meeting, those residents that may wanna have a discussion on consent agenda items, we've already, we've already passed, discussed and passed.
So I, I looked into that, 'cause I, I know you had made mention, and, and at the county level, the county commissioners, they actually have public input for the consent items, so they have a, a, a specific time for the consent items, and then they also have a specific, so-
Specific?
Specific, sorry, I'm having trouble with that word today, time during the agenda for the agenda topics, and then at the end, is when they have a general, anything goes, which I think we run into sometimes, where people wanna come in and talk about topics that aren't on the agenda, and I think with the media communication that we have, and people can email and, and get into this, it'll, I think it'll help our meetings not go till seven, eight-thirty at night, or, you know, I, I, that's what I'm saying, I'm bringing this up for discussion here, it might keep us focused on the actual agenda topics.
Right, well, for me, like I said, I'll open it up to the floor, for me, personally, I, I feel that the way we've been doing things over the last several years is working fine, for me personally, don't, don't fix it unless it's broke, I think, one of the other things to mention, we still have available, that we haven't changed, that when I was elected in seventeen, we didn't have Z comments, so we even still have that available to our residents, that we didn't have before when I first got here, which- So we even still have that available to our residents that we didn't have before when I first got here, which I agree with. I think we should continue with that. I think it's a great opportunity. If a resident, you know, we have many people that work in the evenings that, that can't get here or they don't get off of work in time. They still have an opportunity to send in ecomments. So that's just another reason. I think if you start having two or three areas of citizens' input, that's going to be, actually make the meeting longer. So that's my belief. I'll open it up to the floor for the remaining of my council members. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you. I think that I wouldn't be okay moving it, but I'd be fine adding an additional one, Councilmember Welsh, if that's something you'd be interested in. That's, because I think removing it is a mistake because people can't talk about what we're going to talk about before we do. So I also see what you're saying, they can't even get here if they're working, they can't even be here. But we've had meetings that are 10 minutes long and we've had meetings that are five hours long and it's hard to say what time citizens' input is if it's at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, you move it towards the end. Our council meetings average over three hours in length. You're going to discourage public input by moving it to the end because people won't want to stay around that long because they've got things to do in their lives, at least at 4:30. They know when it's going to happen. You know, they've got a specific time where public input's going to occur. And if we move it to the end, there's no, there's no time set for that. It could, it could occur at 7:30, it could occur at 10:30 at night. So I think it discourages it. And as far as the county meetings go, they start at 9:30 in the morning. That, that puts further restrictions, I think, on people getting there because it's occurring really in the heart of the start of their workday, whereas at least our meetings starting at 4:30 are occurring at the end of a person's workday. So as the mayor said, it's not broken, it works fine. People, if they have an issue to discuss and it's important to them, they make the time to, to show up. And, and I have received no comments in two years and two months in this job of people feeling like they were inconvenienced at the time we start public input.
Councilmember Shepard.
I'm, I'm not for changing, but I will say for someone who has gone to council meetings for like 16 years, I've met a lot of people that have told me that they don't come because they can't make it for citizens' input. So it is a true statement. So what I, what, I'm not for changing where it's at, but I'm for at the end of the meeting, when we all do report, the mayor maybe can say, and is there a citizen that would like to, like a, like a last call on citizens' input? I don't think that would hurt because usually by the end of our meeting, we're lucky if there's anybody left in the room. But if there is a citizen that couldn't make citizens' input because of their work and wanted to hang out to the very end of the meeting, I, I wouldn't mind giving someone three minutes at, at the very end, adding it.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. I would, I would speak for keeping it the way that it is. The agenda is posted, the people know that, that each one of the issues will, will, you know, come about during the agenda. They have the opportunity to make their comments and by us being able to share anything in response to them, as we always can, to, to get that done upfront, as we would consider the topics and anything that would need to be voted on. We've got their input. I've, I've watched all of us take notes and if there's any points of clarification from the citizens' input, we get those points of clarification right upfront before we address any of the issues. So I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with where it is right now.
Councilmember Cummings.
Yes, I understand what Councilman Welsh is talking about. However, I like, I like it the way it is, that it's there for a reason. But I am in agreement because there's a lot of citizens that feel like they're not, their voices are not being heard. So I believe it used to be the emails would come through, correct, with citizen input, and Kimberly would usually read it off, right? I mean, are we still doing that? Because I haven't heard that being done at all. And number two, can we put something on the website as well for a button? We've got our communications department. I mean, we've got a lot of great ideas for them. Put a button, citizens' input, they hit it and then their questions come in if they can't make the meeting. But that was the other reason why I've been talking to you guys about Facebook Live as well because now they can also be engaged and leave comments so later we can hear what the citizens have to say. And I haven't heard anything lately on what's happening with that. Hopefully, this is a positive to where that can move forward too. But I am in agreement because you are correct, Councilman Welsh. Many people do say, I can't make meetings at 4:30 for citizens' input. So I feel that we, we should go one step further to make it a lot easier for everyone so they can make their statements.
So if I may respond?
Yes, sir.
So there is a ecomment link on our website. And once we resumed normal operations following COVID, the council discontinued reading the ecomments into the record. However, the ecomments are shared with all members of council, staff, and they are made part of the official record. But, but no, Kimberly no longer reads it because of time issues.
Well, how can we bring that back? Because there's obviously a lot of citizens that want to give their input.
Well, that, I think that we get a copy of that and it's our obligation to read those. I mean, I do.
Okay, so, so just read it here on the dais?
Yeah, I mean, well, no, I think that we get it ahead of time prior to the meeting. Maybe the city clerk can tell us how that process works. But I know I get a copy of the ecomments prior to the meeting and I review those.
Okay.
And I think that's our responsibility as a council member. But Madam City Clerk, maybe you can tell us how that process actually works.
Yes, Your Honor, the ecomments option is on our website at our agenda page. And I try, with time constraints sometimes getting in the way, to issue them to council four business hours before your meeting. Occasionally, when we have the COW meetings, now that they start at nine, that one's not as strictly met, but we are working toward that goal. I email them to all of council, I copy the city manager and all the directors. And in the past, there was an option to receive paper as well, but slowly, but surely, everyone had agreed not to receive paper packets. So that's no longer done.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
Well, the other thing is too, depending on the agenda, we may offer eight or nine different periods of public input because each ordinance includes a public input period. So if people aren't here to make comments on the consent agenda or any other issues that they might have, they've also got the several other opportunities to give public input during the day too. So having a separate public input period at the end of the day makes no sense to me. Reason we stopped reading ecomments were, there could be 20 or 30 of them. The ecomments were, it would take her longer to read those than the public input periods. Some of those ecomments that she would read would last longer than the three-minute period that we typically give citizens. So it, it, you know, it changed the dynamic of what we were doing when they were on the record. They were there for us to read, they're there for anybody to read. And a lot of them might pertain to one issue and people saying basically similar things. So I think the way we do it now is, is fine. We're supplied those, we should read those, every one of us. And, you know, this is a system that we went back and forth on with the time of meetings and people's availability. But I think people adjust and they figure out a way to be here when an issue is important to them. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other lights on, so I think what we'll do is we'll go to, go down the line. We'll start with Councilmember Long and we're either expressive interest in keeping with the same process or changing the process. I think if a majority of the vote is to change the process, we bring that back to a future COW meeting and, and have that discussion if the majority wants to go that direction. If the majority is to keep it the same, then that's what we'll do. So we'll start with Councilmember Long.
Yes, sir, yeah. I would be fine just keeping it as it is.
Councilmember Cummings. Same or change? I mean, it's simple as that.
Same.
Councilmember Welsh.
From hearing with my fellow constituents, I might be interested in looking at a potential end of the meeting, public input.
So your vote is, your vote is change?
Maybe, maybe give it a trial run to see how it works and if it even is used. But to not have it, yeah, I would like to see something.
Okay, so your vote is change?
Yes.
Same.
Keep it the same?
Yep.
Mine's the same?
Same.
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 Okay, looks like a majority attraction of councils to keep it the same. So that's how we'll continue moving forward. Any other roundtable discussions from any council members? Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, I know, I hit on this a few minutes ago. Rob, how are we looking for Facebook Live? Just keeping it simple. And Dolores, I know you were looking into it and the legality and of everything. I, I feel like this, this can simplify a lot of some of the issues that we're dealing with. So many people have requested this over and over and over. Kind of wondering, you know, where you guys are standing on this. Because I know I brought this to you in November and I brought it to you again in December. I know I brought it several times, so it's not once or twice. I know it's been several times. And we are on social media as it is now, YouTube Live. So it's the same format except for it's Facebook. And we're not asking to interact with the citizens. It's just so they can see us, it's easier for them at their fingertips. And if they want to make comments, they can make comments and we as a dais can kind of see on how they're feeling about certain ideas that we have up here as a whole or individually.
So if I had to defer to my colleague, the city attorney, I know the city attorney's office was looking into, into the issue. So we were waiting on her office to complete the legal review.
So I guess this is a time when staff in the city attorney's office had a miscommunication because I was under the impression there was going to be a staff memo, memos, and then we were going to combine with that. But yes, the, the concern of the city attorney's office is not putting the meetings on Facebook Live. We can put the meetings on Facebook Live. The concerns become when people are commenting in real time during hearings, for example, and they're making comments, especially during quasi judicial hearings. Are you all taking those comments into consideration even though they're not under oath? Also, are any of you in real time communicating with members of the public? And are more than one of you communicating with Mr. Jones when he posts also? It's not putting them, it is not in any way, you're free to put the meeting on Facebook Live. Great caution should be exercised in terms of the commenting. We did ask if they could be totally turned off. It was our understanding, I did not ask, but an attorney in my office asked. It's my understanding that they could be turned off to some extent, but not, not entirely.
Well, then could we take, take the recording that you do now, how you put it up on YouTube, you would just take that same recording and put it up on Facebook?
So you're asking me or the attorney? And I'm going to have to defer, I'm not a Facebook person.
Because it's social media, it's, it's all the same, it's the same format of, of an app. So that's why I'm just confused on how come this is so, so difficult.
Melissa McGee, Communications Manager. We do have the ability to livestream the meetings in the same method that we are currently putting them on CCTV and also YouTube. And we were in communication with the, I almost said state attorney's office, but the city attorney's office just to determine whether or not, if there was a legal issue with that. So we were really working together. And I, I think the last conversation I had was with Gail and she was going to maybe get back with me and let me know what was determined. I have looked into how other cities and counties handle this type of situation. There are cities and county boards that have their meetings broadcast on, livestreamed through Facebook as well as other methods. And they just, there isn't, occasionally, what I've noticed is that residents will respond or comment and there's no response from the city or other board or the, or the council to, in those comments, if that helps.
Well, until you can figure out more legalities, I mean, these videos that you're doing, even like today right now, you're going to take this format and then you put it on YouTube. So why can't we do the same thing and just put it on Facebook? An app's an app. It's all the same. It's not in a different category.
I think that, that part of the equation, I think, is a simple one.
Yeah.
Okay? I think we can do that. We have used Facebook Live before. Again, as long as it's, we're not engaging in active two-way communication, I don't see a problem with delayed broadcasts in terms of the live broadcasts unless we figure out, you know, we establish some sort of a protocol that says when there's communications, you know, when, when people are commenting that, you know, council is number one, not monitoring those comments real time and number two, that nobody is responding to those comments real time.
We could do that, right? Yeah, it is the easiest way to do it.
Yeah. You know, I think we have, you know, I, we all know we have a Facebook page, you know, City of Cape Coral Government. I don't think there's any problem with putting, because I know we do highlights now of the meeting, shortly thereafter the meeting. There's no reason why we can't put a, a video of the meeting here. If you want to click on it and watch it, you can. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think if you get into two-way communication, I can see that being an issue. Especially like the city attorney had mentioned, some of these quasi judicial hearings, that could be, that could be an issue. And then also, if the community is watching that particular Facebook Live and they're commenting, they're going to expect a comment in return, I think. So I think that could be problematic for us. But after the meeting, sticking it on Facebook, where here you can click on the video, just like you can on a computer. As we all know, that members of the community, they can click on, go to our capecoral.gov page and click on and watch the video. I know I do it myself when I'm going back to review. Was that exactly what we said or, you know, was that something that Councilmember Cosden? Maybe I didn't understand it. I'll go back and watch it myself. So the community has that as well. So adding it on Facebook in, in that way, I have no problem with. But I think I would not want to have a open dialogue during the course of the meeting. I think that could be problematic. Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. I, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow an audience in front of us to be throwing comments back and forth to one another during a meeting. And by doing Facebook Live, all we're doing is we're giving the virtual opportunity to do that. So I would, I would speak against having it in a format that would allow for open banter through virtual means. But I would be in favor of having the YouTube link available through Facebook. If we're already going to post it on YouTube, if it's already on a YouTube channel, then through Facebook, you, you combine the two technologies and, and you supply a link. Here's, if you'd like to view, you know, the, the council meeting as of such and such a date, here is the link to the meeting. And so now you've engaged the Facebook audience with a way to watch the meeting. But if, if, if they want to come, if they want to be present in a meeting, then either come and apply proper decorum in a meeting or not. That's just where I stand on it.
May I interrupt for just a moment?
Go ahead.
So I, I think it is important that we tell you first what we are currently doing. So currently, the way that we advertise our meetings is, we actually do post on it, on, on Facebook, on social media, the day prior to the meeting, the day of the meeting, and we, and we include a link to the actual meeting. So later in the day. So people do have the ability to, like you had, I, I'm sorry, I don't know which one just mentioned it, but someone just mentioned that we could, you can go onto Facebook and you can click on the link and go to YouTube. The other thing that I forgot to mention was, when we were doing some research on this, we have the ability to turn off some comments. We just can't turn off all of them, unfortunately. If we could turn off all of them, I think it would mitigate the whole concern of having that banter. But most comments we can turn off. There's, there's certain ones and I, off the top of my head, I can't remember, but it was groups that are following it. There's certain ones we can't turn off at all. So it, it might not be as significant of a concern as, I, I just don't know, obviously, how many people will try to interact. But my understanding of it is that just the residents that are following Facebook aren't all going to be able to comment. But, um, my understanding of it is that just the residents that are following Facebook aren't all going to be able to comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
The way I see it being an asset would be, we talked about the UEP today and about educating the people that are gonna be impacted. So I could literally see doing, you know, taking the, a clip from us talking about that today and putting it on Facebook and boosting it just for that location. You can target a location of the city, hit a boost, and now people going on social media see on Facebook, oh, the council's talking about the UEP, oh, it's in my area. Now, now it's gonna strike interest and now they'll do the research and go on the Cape website and... So I just see it as, uh, an advertising feature to keep people aware.
So you're talking after the fact?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that we can do. The, the concern that we have is real-time broadcasts using Facebook Live with the functionality enabled that allows people to comment and allows all of you to see it, to see the comments.
Cause what I've learned, the generations, yeah, the generations younger than me, they don't read the newspaper, they don't watch the news. This is everything to them, right here.
So let me just say this. So laws are typically, um, delayed in terms of government's ability to adjust statutes, ordinances and so forth, in terms of keeping up with technology, right? Technology is moving so quickly and it takes government in general a long time to, to, to catch up. So, you know, who knows? Maybe the legislature will, will, will catch up at some point and, and address, um, you know, the public, uh, meetings law to allow for this type of, of interaction. But as it stands right now, because of the complexities associated with all of you seeing information, perhaps not recording the information and responses into the public record, I think we've got some restrictions at the moment until the law catches up.
And, and I get that. What I'm saying is, you're just showing the visual, oh, council talked about the UEP for this district today. So maybe not hearing the interaction, uh, but just, it's, it's all, you're just boosting that image and that topic to make people aware.
Totally understand, and we can do that.
I think that would be, I think that would be.
I think we pretty much already do that, do we not? And so, um, we do that using a variety, whether it's Twitter or Facebook and Nextdoor and all the other ones that, that we participate on. So that, that councilman, um, that's not a, shouldn't be a concern for you because we can do that today and we do that.
And I think that would be great on many topics.
Yes. Again, the issue is real-time broadcasts of council meetings.
Gotcha.
Councilmember Cummings?
Okay, let's remove, uh, real time and let's go back. Councilman Stanky. The reason why I, I debunk what you're saying is because people, yeah, you can copy paste all that, but going into YouTube to find that video is not easy. You have a lot of senior citizens today that wanna watch us up here on the dius, hear what we're having to say. For them to go in there, you have to go literally click videos and go scroll down and find the dates in order to find that meeting. Yes, I've gone through it three times and I've showed two people how to do it. It's not user-friendly. Facebook, what you want to do, we got a communications department that we pay of how many people? Six. So there should be no reason why we cannot take one of the, the people in the communications department focused on social media and take the clips of today and you put it only on Facebook. You can keep doing your, your clips, how you're doing it now, but it would be easier for the in-betweens and the senior citizens that wanna watch us to just click play and not make it difficult. You know, we're in the times where we have to learn technology. We don't have a choice. They're not. They're retired or, or they, they, they're, they're all about their day here and there. They're, they're, they're not into all these apps like we are. They've learned finally how to use Facebook. Let's just keep it simple and just put, put the, the one video in Facebook, not, you know, we're on the website, go from, you know, Cape TV, now we're gonna go to YouTube. Now you gotta find the video. Oh, it's not uploaded yet, it's, you know, it's too long, it might take till tomorrow. Just simplify it.
So it seems to me that what you are suggesting is, is easy to do because it's after the fact. So we will look into it and see what it'll take to get it done.
Just to say one thing, is it, is it, what she's asking for, is it really any different than if one of our news agencies was sitting in the back with a camera? I mean, it's the same thing, right?
Well, the difference is, and again, please forgive me, cause I don't tweet, I don't toot, I don't Facebook. So, but my understanding is what changes when you're doing a live broadcast is the fact that people are interacting with all of you and each other. And so, like for example, let's say for a moment that we do that and some, and somebody posts a comment, uh, about, I don't know, rezoning or whatever. And then councilmember Hayden sends a reply. All of you see his reply. He didn't verbalize his reply. I would think that that now puts us in a predicament where we could be, even though it's a public meeting, it may run afoul of the sunshine law because technically he's communicating information that you're seeing, but you're not verbalizing it unless you're on Facebook. Nobody else is seeing it, cause not everybody is on Facebook. Let's, let's face that.
Right.
So...
Or five of the, eight of us might not be watching that, three of us are.
And so, that's, that's the problem. That's why it's different than, you know, one of the local media outlets broadcasting the entire media live or, or us. I mean, cause we broadcast the media, that we broadcast the meeting live. So, so that's the difference. It's that two-way, real-time communication. So as I said before, after the fact, the meeting is over, the mayor's hit the gavel, we go back to our offices. I don't think there's a, there's a problem unless there's a technical problem. Maybe the bandwidth is too much or whatever that Facebook will accept for us to put that link on Facebook so people can say, again, after the fact, well, here's the video of the meeting that council just, just concluded.
So my question, uh, real quickly, uh, is for our communications manager. Uh, I know that we put a synopsis at the end of the meeting or your department does, um, either that evening. And I'm, I'm assuming that it's probably almost pre-drafted before the meeting. Some of it is. I mean, some of it, you know, you have to wait to see how we vote on a particular topic. But would it be fair to say by the next business day from our meeting, you would be able to have something on our, uh, social media page, our Cape Coral government page that, uh, a resident could go and click on that and be able to go straight and watch the video either in entirety or very similar that you can on the computer. They can pick and choose certain topics.
So I can answer that. So we currently, Kimberly, correct me if I'm wrong, we currently do not have that ability with our current agenda software packet.
Often I run into delays because of the size of the meetings and it can take two to five days to post. But we always have the option for a public records request.
So there are, there's, there are different products out there that deal with agenda management that allow you, that essentially breaks up the meeting into the various components. So let's say if you were just interested in the UEP discussion, you can go, you click on and you can go to the video for just that item. You don't have to see the entire video. Cause I think right now, under ours, you get the whole, the video for the whole meeting, correct?
We get the meeting, but in its entirety, we do have an area where we can do what's called jump points. So if someone were to look at it on our website and say, oh, that's the topic I wanna learn, they could click a jump point and go to that section. But for example, the meeting that we just had on the 11th, if I, if I'm correct, I, I still don't have that one posted because of the size of the meeting. It was, I think, five hours long and it just takes a while to reduce it, to be able to be viewed on our website.
Yeah, and so, you know, I have seen other agenda management packets, again, that when it's uploaded, after the fact, you get all the written documents, all the PowerPoints, all of the other stuff. And then you have a link to the video, video clip for just that one discussion point. And so I know Kimberly, as, as part of your work plan for this year, you had indicated she is starting the research with, you know, what's next, what's out there in terms of agenda management software. Um, and so we will be bringing that to you, not anytime soon, but it is definitely on her work plan for this year.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, the last thing, uh, and this ran in, this ran, this was, uh, an issue with past councils, that they were sitting up here looking at their computers and were distracted from the business of what was happening in, in front of them. So the last thing I would ever want is people up here with their phones. And I never bring my phone to a council meeting distracted by what might be showing up and responding to that and taking their attention off what's in front of them. So we don't want that to happen. Here's the thing with Facebook, uh, most people communicate off their phone. They're not gonna sit there and look at an entire five-hour meeting. They're just, they're not gonna do it. I was in the media way too long and mark, and with a marketing company now, that's not how the media works or how communication works. So if we can take specific topics, whether it's UEP or whatever, and boil that down for people, so here's something you might be interested in on Facebook, you know, these meetings are communicated in various ways, whether it's YouTube or whether it's on Cape TV. So if it's another way to get information out there, I'm, I'm all for it. Um, that's great. But, uh, putting a five-hour meeting on Facebook and expecting people to go through that and find exactly what they want. So I think we have to be, uh, almost concierge in how we approach this on, on the bigger topics and, um, maybe post something that might be of informational, uh, and have the most impact to people rather than posting the whole thing and expecting them to, to watch it because they're, they're, they're not going to watch the whole thing. People's time spans and intention spans and all that, they just, they don't work that way anymore. So, thanks.
And I guess, uh, you, when you put out the, uh, overview of the meeting, that's something you could put at the very end to, uh, if you would like to review, you know, the council meeting, uh, have a link that maybe they can go to that takes them right to the Cape Coral link?
We definitely can. I mean, the, the Cape Clips, we take, um, what we try to do is take the items that have been either, uh, popular discussions on Facebook or something like, um, councilmember Shepherd had mentioned, you know, the UEP, something, the items that seem to be a little bit more popular in the community and we try to take those and put that out. It does go on social media, it does go on the website. And we have had media partners reach out and say, thank you so much for doing this. We take these exact items and then they'll reach out and they'll do stories on those topics. So we can, we can definitely add that to that. And we can still, like I had said previously, we do currently post a link to the meeting prior to, but we can all, we can always do that after. Uh, we can, we can change the timing of that, you know, so that if we are posting after and say, here's a link to yesterday's meeting. We don't have the ability to say tune in, well, to this specific spot. But maybe, maybe that's something we could work with the clerk's office on. I know it takes them time to, so we could figure that out.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Uh, just a question for the communication manager. Did I understand you to say that, uh, on Facebook you put out a link to Cape TV?
So yes, so the, currently the link does go to Cape TV and it, and it shows, um, it takes you to the council, I'm sorry.
So that, so they can watch, as, as long as their, as long as their technology can take that type of bandwidth and whatnot, they're, they're good to go.
Yes.
And so in, in response, uh, to councilmember Cummings, the, and if I miscommunicated, I didn't mean, uh, for us to post a link to YouTube and then they go find it. It's my understanding, and, and maybe you can, um, confirm this, that a YouTube channel owner, um, can have a different URL for every one of their, if, you know, content videos. So that, so that the link that you would put on Facebook would be to that particular content video, not to just YouTube in general?
Right, that's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I, I believe that, that there can be a link that will take them directly to that particular video where a consumer would not have to hunt and pack and find where it is on YouTube. That, at least, that's my understanding at this point. Thanks.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, okay, so, we're lacking so much in the city, but yet we, we wanna view where all these other cities are. This is something that's so simple that I feel like everyone's making so difficult. So this is social media, we have a communications department. And let me ask you a question. So right now we're being videotaped. In the meeting, it stops. What do you do with that footage?
The footage is currently livestreamed straight to Cape TV and YouTube. And then that's where it resides, that's where it stays. So we don't edit it.
Yes. But with that footage going livestream, you still have that footage saved and data, correct? Right. So you take that data, I know this because I do this with my business. You take that data, which takes five minutes, and you would copy and paste it into your page, your Facebook page. And you would title it of what today's date is and what the meetings were about. Now, if you wanna go one stop farther, we can go ahead and like we do YouTube, go in one hour and forty-three minutes and you'll hear the UEP project being talked about. Go into two fifty-two, you will hear a project being talked about Facebook Live. Why is that a good idea? Why is it a good idea to have Facebook? Go to three oh four. It's very simple. This is not difficult. We have a communications department with a staff of six. We take one of the, the, the people in that communications department, ask them to be more involved in with our social media platforms. We are lacking this so much in a city of our size. Other cities do these things. We're not. And one of the biggest complaints we're having is citizens' input. This is a way now the citizens are involved to, to listen. Yes, I understand we're on YouTube, but you, but you have to understand though, as well with YouTube, it goes from Cape TV to YouTube. You have to hit it and sometimes you do have to go up in videos, councilman Stanky, you do. I know this because I had to help a couple people to find the video. And sometimes it takes a little longer to process it too on YouTube. And it can get complicated, confusing because you also have the young council meeting too in there. And then you have other meetings. So a lot of times they're, they're mixed and matched, what, what a day may consist of, of, of all that, all that footage. So it's really not that easy for someone that doesn't do social media. To me, this is simple, everyone's making it difficult. I feel all we gotta do is just take that footage and you just put it on the Cape's website or on, on the Cape's Facebook page and you just put a title on it.
So I think the request that you just, the way you just described it is a little different from what first came up. Let's take the first issue off the, off the table. This, the way you just described it, in theory, sounds reasonable. And so we'll work with our communications staff to, um, determine what it will take to do something like that on Facebook. Cause essentially what you're doing is you're taking the Cape Clips and you're just identifying where in the video they need to go to.
Yes.
Or you do a quick, I don't know, an express link, whatever. But, you know, so as you said, on Cape Clips, let's say it says council discuss UEP one, click here for the, for the video discussion. And so you click on it and you just get that portion. I think that's reasonable. I'll, I'll work with Melissa and others to find out, do we have the technical capability with the software that we have or whatever to be able to do that? Okay? So let me do that, let me work on that and get you an answer.
I went in that direction since live is kinda complicated.
Yes.
And there's a lot that you guys gotta look into. This is more simplified, much easier, I know, cause I do it and many people that I know do it. And, um, I know you have the equipment to do it. The resources, resources are at our fingertips and it will just be a lot easier, I think, at, at this time too. So thank you for...
I will commit to looking into it deeper and bringing you back, bringing council back, um, some additional information.
And that's the other thing I was gonna mention, you know, we all are gonna have, um, ideals and suggestions moving forward. But what we have to remember is we are a council collectively. So anytime that any one of us wants to bring something forward, even though you may have a passion to do that or councilmember Stanky may have a passion to do that, we make decisions collectively as a council. So no matter if it's this topic or any other topic in the future, and today's a golden opportunity to have those discussions, just like we did with councilmember Welsh's suggestion, we'll, we'll have a discussion, we'll talk about it and collectively we'll make a decision and move forward and direct staff, uh, to do things as a council. So, uh, and these are the, the best opportunities. So anytime that any one of you have a topic of discussion, I'm more than happy to add it to a committee of the whole meeting so we can have those discussions, no matter what that topic is. Any other roundtable items? Okay, seeing none, time and place of future meeting. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, January 25th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. We also have a Cape Coral City Council Retreat, which is a two-day event, which will be held on Thursday, January 26th, 2023, and Friday, January 27th, 2023, beginning each day at 9:00 AM. It will be held at the Nicholas NX Conference Room A200, better known as the green room that's painted gray, at 8:15 Nicholas Parkway, Cape Coral, Florida. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of you will adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.